Welcome to the town act and planning board meeting for January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, sorry. Uh, the Stanford pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To Chris.
Oh.
Chris, yeah, you should take.
Wrong beat. February second. I had it.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I was against the minutes. Want to get a motion on January fifth minutes?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes from the January fifth public hearing and meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Three. All opposed? Yeah.
Yeah. Abstain.
Abstain.
I'll also make a motion. We approve the minutes of the January nineteenth meeting as written.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? One up and down. All right, I'd like to also welcome my new member, Adam Brock. He's our alternate and tonight he's actually getting thrown into the fire a little bit. So we'll go with that. All right, uh, new business, Sasha Smith, six sixty Hopper Road, map two, three, five, lot zero, three, six, application for conditional use for in-home daycare.
So there's a lot of, so there's some stuff that she's still working on. Uh, this is kind of like preliminary, more or less, what is the board looking to do? What do they want from her and how to proceed with it? She's looking for some.
Guidance.
Some guidance from, from the board to how to proceed and.
Hi, so I'm Sasha and this is Amy. And as Jason was saying, we are thinking of opening an in-home on Hopper Road. Ideally, we'd like to do less than thirteen, so twelve, six being under two, six being over two, offering before and after school care. Um, because as you know, we don't have that right now in our school. And some background for, um, well, I'll speak and then Amy will tell you a little bit about her. So currently I'm a senior at U M F for early childhood education. Um, I also work at a local center in Stanford for preschool. Before that, I worked at Portsmouth Naval Shipyard at their center and also worked at Head Start.
And I'm Amy Cooley and I, um, have been working in childcare for twenty-plus years. Um, I have six kids, fourteen to twenty-one. I'm currently doing in-home care for Sasha's daughter and another little girl. Um, and we just want to expand our business and, um, serve some local families.
Could you just tell me how many kids again?
Um, so it'd be under thirteen. We're only allowed twelve between the two of us, so six under two and six over two.
Max.
We're currently working on getting licensed, um, but we are unable to move forward until we present it to the town. So we have this left, we have to test our water and have a fire marshal come in. But other than that, we already have our references gathered, we've already done C P R, we've done the mandated reporter training, we've done the health and safety that the state requires.
So attached to that packet I gave you is a kind of a daycare application that I had put up that lots of the questions that, um, needed to be answered and how to, what she needs to do for you guys as well.
Do you have a fenced in area or don't you?
Um, that's something that we're gonna get an estimate on.
Okay.
In the spring. In the back corner of the map is where we're thinking of fencing in. For licensing, it has to be a minimum of four feet.
Right. Yeah, if this paperwork's not lining up, that's why I just asked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's hard to put a fence in in the snow.
And if this doesn't get approved, then I'm not getting off.
He's a painter, he wouldn't know much from this.
Uh-oh.
But you should have done it in December, it was warmer.
Should have. It's only been now.
So the area would be right to the left of that house?
Yes, that like dark.
That dark.
Yep.
They're looking right here.
Yep.
Trees gotta come down?
No.
I don't think so.
It's pretty open, um, area and also what's not pictured in that is we have added a porch, so we're gonna try to like screen in underneath the porch eventually someday. Um, because we would like to do this on the first floor only of my house and then later on in life do like a finished off basement. And that's right off of where the basement doors go.
It's so pretty when there's no snow.
So your basement will be locked?
Yes, no one will be able to, they will not be able to go in the basement. We're just sticking straight on the first floor.
You have a fire escape plan?
Um, that will come with like licensing, because we have to have a fire marshal come in, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do have exits.
Yeah.
Well, now you come through. Been asking for you for two weeks now.
There's two first floor exits.
I'm smart sometimes.
There's two first floor doors for exits and then there's also egress windows.
You, you built a porch on that or you're building?
The porch is already done.
Okay.
That's on there.
If you use that house, never had. And the stairs off that?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I have two young kids, so I didn't want stairs on it.
It's actually perfect.
How do they get to the play area from the house? Is there a, do they go right from the house into the play area?
So it's hard to tell from this picture, but you can come right from the front door and then it looks like originally there was like a second driveway that went underneath the house to a garage. So there's actually a pretty smooth pathway that goes around into like where the back area would be.
It's right between the house and that tree. There's like a stick, like a walkway that goes down around the back.
That was listing photos.
On the one side you don't have a picture of.
Right.
Lee, what would your hours be?
Um, probably starting at like six thirty, because we really wanna do the before care and then five to five thirty, five thirty being the latest.
Five thirty.
I think we get to schedule a site walk.
That's it.
Because we're mostly looking at the inside of the place and that, it doesn't matter if there's snow really.
Right.
Though we don't even need to inspect the inside, right? Because the, the state does that.
Right, yeah, the state and the fire marshal.
But we get a look, a look at that and see if any, anything pops into mind like.
What's your basement door like that leads down into the?
Um, they're like French doors.
Those will have to be changed.
That leads.
Fire rated door.
From in the house or outside the house?
In, inside the house.
Oh, no, it's a single exterior door.
Right. That would have to be changed to a fire rated door, just to give you a heads up.
That's a requirement by the fire marshal?
Yeah. It's gonna have a certain fire rating and I'm not sure how long.
Usually ninety minutes. Ninety minutes usually is one of those things.
Yeah. I think it's a little bit longer for that.
Wow.
Okay, I know the state sends out the fire, we send in our application with all this and the state is assigning a fire marshal to show up to our house.
Yeah, we're pretty much, we'll, we'll do a site walk, we'll wait for your application from the state, see what the state says and. There's not, not a ton to it.
No. No issues with the septic?
None.
It's an older septic, um.
Seven fifty. All right.
Huh?
This is.
Seven fifty.
Yeah, seven fifty.
Oh, that's the tank, but it's a hundred and eighty gallons, so they do it by, so it's rated for two bedrooms.
Right.
So a hundred and eighty gallons per day.
And so the addition of the kids doesn't impact that? There's enough rate?
When they design a septic, they don't design it by the amount of people that's in the house, it's by how many bedrooms are occupied.
I got.
I know, I don't, I honestly don't have the answer to that one and that might be a question for the, for the state, they might be asking that as well.
Would you say a hundred and eighty gallons a day?
Hundred and eighty gallons, so that's two, ninety gallons per bedroom.
Yeah, when they're gonna have twelve kids and two adults, so it's like ten gallons per person.
Well, except our kids will also be using diapers.
Yeah.
Six of them.
So we won't be, well, yeah.
Right.
Or more, I mean, I know plenty of three-year-olds that aren't. But yes.
And then also with the before and after school care, that gives our numbers lower during the day because we're gonna factor in the kids are going off to school.
Remote waste disposal, like you just go to the dump or are you gonna have a dumpster on site or?
No, we'll take trips to the dump.
Yeah, we're just gonna go to the dump.
How long should we expect the process with the state to take? Do you have any idea?
That's in their, that's in their court, they don't give us a estimated time, no.
Are they requiring your water test before they even come down?
Um, it's part of the application, so I have to get the water test before I send in all the papers for the application. So yes.
And they'll check the temperature of your hot water heater and stuff like that as well, refrigerator, all that stuff.
Yep.
Yeah, let's schedule a site walk.
Jason, the waiver.
Huh?
The waiver.
Oh, the waiver was, she just, one of the things that conditional use has is a site plan and she wanted to make sure that she didn't have to do the site plan just because of time restraint and, and the cost of having it done. Just a site plan for the property, just when you look at the conditional use, she just asked, she just, we sent that, uh, you know, certified perimeter survey, just asked for a waiver for that, so she didn't have to obtain, obtain them.
Well, it's outlined in the D R A N.
Mm-hmm. And I do have the tax map attached, uh, to this thing too, so I mean, that's kind of what we're hoping the board would, would take as a submittal.
I don't have any issues with that.
It's on the back of the release. This is what the chart was in tax map. Yeah. So we'll just get the house on this thing.
Mm-hmm.
Because we got the play area, we don't have the house.
It's actually on there, it's just, it's really light.
The printer didn't bring it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's at the line.
Well, yeah, maybe just make it legible.
It's just a go.
Yeah. We can, we can darken it up for you guys.
But that should be sufficient. That's all we'd be interested in, I think, is the location of the driveway, the house and the play area. It's nice that it's not right next to the road.
Right.
Correct.
And you look wooded outside your property right there, so you're right not, not right next to somebody's house right there?
Yeah, you can't see anyone, they can't see us, we can't see them.
There, it looks like you have sufficient, just looking at this picture, you have sufficient parking, at least people coming and going.
Yep.
Is there a turnaround in your driveway or something where they, you can maybe make a turnaround so that they don't back up into the road?
So the way the, I wanna say the house was originally, is that it looks like there's a whole second driveway, which you can't really see from this picture. Um, so you, we can back our cars right on there and come around.
It's on the left of the house.
Yeah, it's on the left.
So this is.
Yeah, you come and then you can back it up right in the other drac, to right.
It's essentially a Y.
Is that a rock, this one down below it?
Um, that's, I'm not really sure what that is, but there's no big rock there, so that's what we use normally too for our plow guys, he pushes there, so we have plenty of room to turn around, so we don't have to back up all the way because I have a really long driveway.
It's also about three car, you can see there, it's about three cars wide, so even with all the snow, there's still plenty of room for us to turn around in it right now.
Schedule a walk?
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't need to even notice real quick, right?
We're not doing it this Saturday, it's gonna be the fourth. Um, we need to notify A P A, that's about it.
Okay.
I was just looking at the eleventh and I have something on the eleventh, but I can't remember what it is.
Yeah, well, there's no rush, because we, we're waiting on the state, so we couldn't even do it in March. Just get it scheduled and then.
Is that the March or are you waiting for something from us to go to the state?
Um, so I need to have like the conditional use like permit with just like terms and conditions on it that I can present to them, that I've at least presented it to.
So it's kinda.
All right, so we should do it sooner rather than later.
Right.
Okay. No, I, I don't think we approve until we get state approval, right? Or we can, we can get it ready to approve.
Right.
Okay.
We can make it a condition.
Yeah. State approval. Oh, that's true. All right. So that would be what, like the eight, eighteen?
That would push you to March, second for the next meeting.
I don't know what I got going on the eleventh, but I'm not sure it's the day anyway. If you wanted to do it on the eleventh, I'd say schedule it, if, you know, other folks can make it.
Yeah. What time are you thinking?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock on March eleventh?
February eleventh.
Oh, February eleventh, sorry. We got stuck up in March.
You're working that weekend.
I'm working Patrick there. Um, is it okay if we have someone step in for us for the site walk, just because that's the weekend I work my second job?
Let's just do it the next weekend then.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll bump you to the eighteenth of February.
Okay.
Then you would be on.
Because I won't be there, but you'll be there.
Maybe the next meeting would be March second, that we could get you in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
That's what we're gonna do. Yeah.
The same time, ten AM?
Yeah, ten AM on.
Eighteen.
I can be there as long as it, yeah.
I won't be there for sure. I'll be in charge.
Well, this is, we don't have.
Is this an inside walk-through or an outside?
Uh, did we go, go in the last one? I don't think, we must have looked at the where the play area was gonna be with the driveway, the intersection with the road.
Right.
Okay.
Egress exit, you know, like do they need a handrail getting in, that kind of stuff? Egress and exit. Um, I don't think we need to go.
Okay.
But we might peek in, you know, if you said this is the main room, we're gonna, the kids are gonna be in, we might peek in, but it's not gonna be like inspecting.
No, I'm just thinking about the dog.
Oh, yeah. Good thing to think of.
One quick question, when the kids are going to the play area with a fenced in area, are they gonna be going out the front or out the back?
No, they'll go out this door.
They'll go out this door here?
Correct. Yeah, there isn't, there isn't a back door, so this door here and then there's a door on that side of the house.
Okay, on the side?
Correct.
Near the tent or the other side?
Sorry?
This side and then you send?
Behind that truck essentially.
Okay.
And then there's a slider on the left side of the house and that's where the second story, like porch situation is with no stairs.
Well, I'm just thinking aloud, my only concern would be just, uh, the kids going from the, from the house to the play area and cars being, moving around and stuff like that, you know, if there was a way to get them to the play area a little more safely perhaps, I don't know.
Leave the side door would be better.
Well, I mean, sure. Do you mind if I just?
Go ahead.
The other thing is we can easily put up, you know, a fence between the side of that mudroom and, you know, the where we have to go down, but I don't also imagine us coming and going during drop-off or pickup, right? Like drop-off, come inside.
Yep.
You know, and I, I hear you.
You're the advocate here, you.
Yep, yep, no, we appreciate it, but, you know, our playtime outside would be designated between next hour and Y hour.
How far is the drop-off off of that?
That's where the decrease is down, that, that's essentially the walkway.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a soft hill at that point.
I guess we'll see you on February eighteenth at ten AM.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
You guys make a motion now, yeah? You need to go motions on sidewalks? I'll make a motion. I know that we schedule a sidewalk for Sasha Smith, six sixty Hopper Road, application for in-home daycare. The sidewalk would be on February eighteenth at ten AM.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? He's not gonna be here, so.
Yeah.
He's coming.
Oh, so I'm like.
You, you guys usually make a motion for sidewalks too though, right?
I think.
Yeah, I thought, I thought you made a motion for anything.
Not in a while, so we're kinda.
I was kinda drawing a blank, that's why I, I asked.
All right. Uh, next up would be Elias Thomas, three eighteen Route one oh nine, map one four seven, lot zero, one ten, application for conditional use for a commercial office space. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Tell us, I don't know if everyone's familiar with you or your business, so.
My wife and I own Exeky Real Estate at the foot of Mousum and we're going to be moving out of there, uh, by the end of April, so we are looking at, at this property at three eighteen Route one oh nine to be our new office spot.
Uh, so I, attached to this, so the, the previous owner actually had come in, I don't have a date on it, but she had come in and asked for an application for conditional use. Um, she had, there was an art studio there when she came in and it looks like they approved it, but then wrote a note underneath it that said did not need conditions, a conditional use permit, so there was a, a current business there.
It's the.
Give me a second.
Yeah, across from Willings?
No, no, no.
Oldsworth Field?
Across, right on the corner of Tenth Street.
Triangle.
Uh, yeah, in triangle. Yeah, she had, um, she had her art gallery and her art studio in the barn, but I call the barn garage, which is the separate, uh, detached building. Um, I think she had a, a state permit for that since nineteen eighty-four. So if you zero in a little bit more, uh, and then move your cursor right by the twenty-five, yeah, that's the, that's the barn.
Oh, right here. Let me, let me just get rid of that.
Uh, the barn garage gallery space. So zoning district.
So it's, okay, so let me pull that one up for you guys. Um, so this one, there's a discrepancy on this and this is for you guys to determine in a second. It's rural, um, and we have two maps here, we have a shoreline zoning map and then we have the zoning map. With the zoning map, it, that shoreline touches the back of that, it's a carport, which is not actually, um, there's not, not gonna be any business going on in there, but then if you go on this one, which, and if, and I'll zoom out in a second, you'll be able to see what I'm talking about. This one puts it right in it, but I think it's just an error with the maps, because you'll see in a second, uh, I think this orange is supposed to be shifted over and follow this contour and that would put it back, that would put it back with the other one. If you see what I'm saying right there? I think there's just a, um, but that's for your.
The flood plain right there, where we're looking at, the blue. The FEMA hundred-year flood plain.
That, I just clicked on that, so there is no flood plain there.
Well, it's clicked on right there, you got it checked off. Yeah.
Yeah, so there is, so let me get rid of the shoreline zoning and you'll, it'll be, you'll see it's not even there.
Okay, so that's the flood zone right there.
So this is, so clicking on this FEMA flood, this is their, your hundred-year flood right here, um, it shows you no hash marking. I know, there's nothing there.
Okay. So that's the shoreline right there.
So that, that leaves you with your shoreline, that's just the FEMA, that's just your hundred, so there's nothing in, on that property.
Right, right.
If that were in the hundred-year flood plain, we'd all be floating right now.
Possibly.
Considerably higher off the, uh, off the lake level.
Yeah, because it's all high slope.
It's straight down, yeah.
Um, a blue color to.
Right.
The different overlays are.
So that is your, there's your rule, um.
So the, the.
So it's.
Office is gonna be in the, excuse me again, in the detached building or the right of the oak building?
The detached, is, is, either option, whatever you guys, if you guys, however you interpret that map, um, with the red, with the buff, two hundred fifty-foot buffer, which was the orange, which puts it in the, he's initially asking for what he's described to me and, and he can take it over too, but he's looking to do it in the detached garage. So he's looking to, correct?
Yes.
That's your, your first option.
Is there rest, restrooms in that garage or?
I, I believe there was one restroom in there.
Okay.
But if there's not, then we would, uh, we would defer to go into the houses as, as an option.
He does have a, an agreement with the, um, children?
Say again?
It's the children?
Yes, Mrs. Sargent passed away, um, she was, she was the widow of Bill Sargent, who some of you know, uh, or knew, and, um, she passed away this past year as well as one of her daughters and the remaining daughter, the surviving daughter is serving as personal representative for her estate in Maine. representative for her estate in Maine and Executrix, 'cause they use a different term over in New Hampshire. So she's handling two of these estates at the same time, which is, is pretty onerous, having done it myself. And, uh, so we've, my wife and I have been talking with her and her husband about the possibility of doing this, and, uh, they're still cleaning stuff out, uh, which is a little bit, you know, and if you've ever gone through that process of, of clearing out old papers and, and trinkets and so forth and so on, all of a sudden, everything has a story, and it takes a lot longer than, um, than it might be, uh, as, as supposed to be as efficient as it could be. But they're working on it, they're up here, they're from Plymouth, Massachusetts, and so it, they come up here, most, they try to get up here every weekend to keep working on it. We have a deadline, uh, that, um, if they are not out of there prior to the time that we need to be out of our office, uh, we will work a, uh, an agreement with them to be able to use the, the, um, gallery building, if you will, as, for storage of our things, and we'll pay them rent for that until such time as, as, as the property changes hands.
Is this in writing, this agreement you have?
The, there is a, there's a letter of intent, which is, uh, the parties are sworn to confidentiality, so I can't share that with you, but that, that was drafted by our attorney and has been sent down to them. So we're waiting to hear back.
I have, I've seen it, um, and he'll present it to the next meeting, too, um, when it's not as, I guess, a confidential situation, but I, he did show it to me. So, if you can take my word or not, either way, he'll, either way, for the next meeting, he'll, he'll be able to present it.
Kinda needy town.
Yeah, I know.
What are the, um.
I'm sorry.
What are the approximate dimensions of the barn?
You have that on your.
It in the, uh.
Should be.
I think it's 11, it's 1100 square feet.
Okay.
I believe it's.
Pretty good size.
Right, it looked pretty long.
Um, listen, they have, they're two, it's like a double, double entry door on the front where the lattice work is, and then there are two singles, uh, going down the left side of it, um, so it, it's essentially like a four-car garage, and then the lean to, as Jason, uh, mentioned earlier, um, that they park, uh, lawn mowers and that kind of thing in.
11, 1152 is the square footage of that garage.
And in the land use chart, we're, we're probably thinking it's, uh.
Buildings of, uh, services under 2,500?
Professional and business services having less than 2,500. And, so that's, that's why we wanna know where it's located, which zone it's in. Well, that seems like the biggest thing we gotta figure out.
And if, and if it goes to the house, that's still under the 2,500. Now, this is what I had talked to you guys last week, if you guys, was it the property, all combined things, or would it, one building versus the other building? That was, that was, with us, it was geared, that question was geared to this application.
Right. I think it would, it would have to do with the amount of space that they were utilizing for the business.
Right, and you definitely change this application, 'cause right now it's listed as 3562.
I put in, oh, that's my fault. I put in all the structures on the property.
Right.
Not just, um, that was, that, that would be my fault.
Well, she has a greenhouse there, and there's also a shed there, so.
You didn't take those into.
I, I put everything on there. I put everything that was on the property, um, that created, that created non-vegetation and stuff, whatever that says.
Is the driveway sufficient for the business?
Yes, yes, I think it's, I think it actually has more space than our office does now.
Don't think.
It's pretty wide there, and there's, there's a pretty good parking area in front of the gallery building.
The horseshoe, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, and then it goes, there's parking along the side, uh, coming in off of the back end of 10th Street and, and coming in that way, too. That's, that part's not paved, the, the rest of it is paved.
That would be like my worry, 'cause I know like, when you do your rental exchanges, that's your busiest days.
And, and that's, that, that whole business has changed.
Okay.
Uh, as far as rentals, um, they, most of the tenants now don't even bother to come into the office, uh, they have their, their, they have their funds there already, uh, we have, uh, the combination entry, um, for each property, and so, once they're ready to go, we give them the combination, and then we change that at the end of the next tenancy and so forth, so, um, there's, there's very, very little traffic. The only time that there would be any number of cars, maybe six, uh, six or seven vehicles is, um, for closing, uh, 'cause we have a lot of closings that take place at our office, so you have the, the people in the office, so we probably have three of those vehicles, and then the, uh, the title company person, the car for the buyer, and the car for the seller. So, and that's about, uh, law, length of time is about an hour, unless somebody decides they want to read every word in the documents of the mortgage papers, and that takes a little longer.
Would you utilize only 109 and not 10th Street when you're doing this?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, we might, we, as, as.
Personally.
Personally, using the, you know, the people that are working there, the personnel could go out and off of 10th Street and out Triangle Street if, if, if there were a lot of cars in the front, but primarily, we'd just, we'd just be going on, going in the, uh, the horseshoe.
I think the biggest thing would not, would be not impacting, uh, like the 10th Street neighborhood.
Yeah, maybe just put a sign up saying employee use only.
Yep, we could do that.
Possibly. I hate bad signs, but it's not spelled out.
Right.
We'll use it. Don't put cones, 'cause that gets confusing for me.
Certainly does. Are we, I, I guess we could paint an arrow on the, on the entry, on the, on the horseshoe?
Yeah.
And, uh, an out arrow going the other way?
Yeah, and then maybe just a line where, on the edge of the, 'cause you said it ran through the dirt.
Yep.
Towards 10th Street, maybe just like a yellow caution line.
Yep.
And a sign.
Yep.
What'd you say the garage?
1152. With a 260, uh, lean to, so 11, just say 11, 1400. Still under the.
So, yeah, I guess we'll just hang up on what zone it.
Yeah, what zone it is, yeah, 'cause it, I mean, for these professional and business services, um, cannot permit it in the shoreline zone, so.
Right.
But it may not be in the shoreline zone, I'm, I'm not sure where the description's coming from.
Well, I would just, as we, as I went back to the other one, like I was saying here, so this, um, with your zoning map, shows the shoreline overlay, um, but then if you go up to the shoreline zoning map, done by Southern Maine Regional Planning Commission, if you click on the shoreline district, uh, it'll show you the 250 here, oops, give me a second. But I think the contours are just off, I, I really think this is supposed to slide north, um, and this, you can, this will go here, and then it'll go up over here, but I'm not positive, I'm just, it doesn't make sense why this is.
Why are there two oranges?
Well, there isn't, let me get rid of this one.
Oh, that was the other thing.
You had the, you had the overlay underneath it, and it just made it look, I think, too, but I really think that this is supposed to, the orange is just not located.
It looks like just a little further around the lake.
No, maybe it's not, I just.
'Cause it's not, it's not right on the shoreline, but.
I would say it's more than 250 feet off that. I would say it's more than 250 feet from the shore.
If you, if you go by the contour on the lake, yes.
So this puts you at it.
One corner of it.
This, it's a tax map, too, so you'll see it's, it's, they're always not accurate, but the, um, there was a variance on that garage at one point, too, that was approved, um, because how it was built.
So we're thinking the corner of the building is in the shoreline zone?
It.
Well, maybe a foot.
And that, and that's the carport, um, part where they wouldn't be, if it was that bad, he'd probably take it down. So let me, give me one second.
I guess the next one over.
So this is, this back little corner probably touched, might touch that section. Not habitable space, I guess, you, if you wanna, I don't know how you guys wanna consider it, but, but, like I said, that was more or less up to your interpretation, um, this was another situation where this application came in quick and, um, just tough getting a survey out there right now, I don't know how you guys wanna, what you guys require for it.
Like, if one is not really usable space.
Right. Except, I think, I don't know whether it was Jason, he said we, we could park the exit mobile in there.
Store signs, you're realistic.
Exactly, exactly.
So it appears there does not seem to be any type of bathroom facilities out in that garage, according to the subject plan that's here.
It all seems like it's just all tied into the house.
Yeah, it's all tied in the house, doesn't, doesn't show anything going, going from the garage at all.
So if you were set up in the garage, what would you be doing with the house? Just curiosity?
Probably using the bathrooms, and maybe, maybe the kitchen for lunch or something like that.
You preferring the garage, the, uh, no, the gallery, the?
Whatever, yeah, whatever that is, the barn gallery, whatever, yeah, I think so. I just, I need to go back in there and, and to, it's just full of stuff right now. Um, what I'd like to do is go in there and see what can be reconfigured, or whether it's just gonna be major, and if it is, then we would just simply use the house.
This was another instance of just trying to get him in front of you guys, so that you guys could tell him where to go, um, and the fact that he's on a time restraint, um, with his other location, so I was like, well, see what, we'll see if we can do.
Definitely not a sight vision problem with traffic, you know, seems like every bad accident's right in front of that property for some reason.
It's close to the trading post.
Right. That could, that's the issue, you got in the middle there between the trading.
A lot of people are speeding up right there as you're going.
Right, I think it, it doesn't change to 50 until you're past there.
Yeah.
It's a 40, after, after pit sticks, it, it turns to 40, and then it's 50, I think, just past Triangle, or right, right about a Triangle. I think that's right.
I'm still stuck at 50 by the trading post, though.
Oh, you're one of those.
Yeah. I'll admit my thoughts. Yeah, they just changed it a lot a couple of years ago, 'cause of that one bad motorcycle accident.
Yes.
Well, I think we need the agreement that will tell us you can, you can do this to, to get to the end.
What our, what our intention is, is to, once that's, once, once we sort of put all of these pieces together, is then to go to a purchase and sale agreement, and that's, and that's fine, I don't, I don't mind sharing that at all.
Okay.
They also have to wait for an appraisal, and I don't know, Virginia can probably tell, confirm the fact that appraisals have been going six, eight weeks out. Having said that, there are a couple of appraisers who do private appraisals, uh, for this kite, this type of, of situation, they're not doing bank appraisals or anything like that, and so it takes a little less time, and, uh, I provided them with names of, I think, three different appraisers, and, uh, again, uh, Mrs. Barrows, who is the, is the daughter who's handling this, um, she works long hours every day, so it's, it's a case of having her husband try to, to, um, uh, help her out as far as making, uh, making appointments for an appraisal to be done and that kind of thing, so.
Would she give you a lease agreement? If, if it wasn't done in time, would she at least lease you the property?
I don't think that would be a problem at all.
Yeah, we just need something that says you're authorized to do.
Yep, yep, no, I understand.
And then, uh, I guess you're gonna make a decision after you check out that.
Yes, yes.
You know, the final.
I mean, I'm, I'm, my, my, my thought is not to, if, if there's no way to do that easily, then, then we would, um, we gotta, and again, I don't know whether that's allowed. If we had our offices in, in the big building, uh, to use the, the bathroom facilities in the house, I don't know whether that's something that's allowed or not.
I don't think there's, my opinion is, there's no issue with that, I would just wanna know, once you make the determination.
Right.
Determination, it's too much work, broken barn.
Yep.
An office, so you're gonna use the house? We would wanna know that.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
You gonna have signage up front, I take it?
She has a sign there, uh, I would be applying for a little bit larger sign, I mean, it's con, it's considerably smaller than I think than the, than the overall signage.
I think you're allowed 64 square feet or something like that?
Yeah, and that, this is, that's, that, right now, I think it's about this big, so, yeah, we would be putting something up a little bit larger, but not the, uh, probably not the, the big teal key.
No neon signs?
You put the key on the roof?
I could do that, I could do that, I could do that, actually pointing in, right?
Yeah, then wrap neon around it.
There you go, there you go. You know, years and years ago, when it was, when it was a red key before we bought the franchise from Exit Realty, whose, whose color is teal, we had, it was a red sign, and one Christmas, I decided I thought that would be really cool to take little tiny red lights and go around the entire key. It was awful looking, and people thought we were running a brothel there, so we extinguished those lights very quickly.
Anything else that we here would need? I don't think we have to go look at it.
Well, yeah, I would think we'd wanna wait for some sort of ownership agreement before we actually.
Ownership or lease, at least a lease agreement.
Something more than, than this, before we schedule the sidewalk.
Yeah.
It seems, it seems like it's a work, workable thing to do in this property, there's nothing, I don't see anything holding us back right now.
Beyond the other people's end that's pulling him back, holding us back.
Yeah.
Trickle down effect.
Yes, it is, and it's, and it's, and it trickles both ways too.
Right.
Because they, and their, one of their concerns was, well, if you can't get the approval of the planning board to even do this, then what's going to happen? Well, I probably wouldn't be interested in purchasing the property. So it's, it's a, it's a push me, pull you kind of thing.
Well, I've just gone through the review procedures and I don't see anything that's an issue. You know, that one corner of the building, I don't think that's a showstopper in my opinion.
No, and it's not even really usable space.
Yeah.
Other than storage. Or signs or whatever, yeah.
If it was usable, nothing could cause a hiccup, I would think.
Well, either way, less than 2,500, more than 2,500, it's not permitted in the shoreline zone. So the size of the buildings doesn't really affect that. I mean, he could totally just set up in the house and he'd be finding their way.
Right. Or even from part of the garage, he's not in.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it seems, seems workable, but it should really, you know.
I guess you'd have to go back and, uh, what were you asking for? An agreement, yeah.
Yeah, the, the letter of intent was, was the initial approach to this. And that was dependent upon an appraisal. And so that's, I don't know how far we can go or how quickly we can go. But I'm willing to, to go back to, to our attorney and say, look, work this into a purchase and sale agreement. So at least there's something a little bit more tangible. And, and at the very least, that we would have an agreement to lease the property.
Right, right. Something that shows you, you're controlling the property.
Yep.
And then the determination, again, you're going to be in the house for the garage.
Sure.
That's, from what I see, that's all we need. Then we'll see. Now, when could you try to get that to us?
As soon as I possibly can. If they, it, it's easier when they come up.
Right.
Because it's, it's a little difficult to have things, and again, she's juggling two estates at the same time. And it's, I think it's, once she's here, it's, it's easier to sit down and, and just, and just talk through things.
Right.
And I'm not sure whether they're coming up to freeze their buns off this weekend or whether they're waiting for the following weekend.
Right.
You could have it for the 16th though?
Yes, I should be able to.
That work for you guys?
Yes, I believe the 16th is, today's the second.
Yeah, 16th. If you could bring that in on the 16th.
Sure.
Hopefully.
Yep.
If not, I guess we have to bump it back to March 2nd.
March 2nd?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I will do, I'll do my best to get that done, get it here so we can have that for the 16th.
Okay. That's it, right? Will we have to do a public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. And how much notification time? Are you at the end of April or the beginning of April?
We have to be in, we're, we're departing from one place on the 30th of April.
Okay.
He's going to be out of the country for?
And I'll be out of the country for the better part of March to March.
Like March, now he'll be here for the first meeting in March, but then he'll be gone for the remainder of March. He won't be here for the third one.
Would you be back by April 6th?
Sure.
He has everything by the 16th? We can set the public hearing for the April 6th? 10 days notice?
Well, how funny, if he has.
A whole month?
He'll have a whole month to notify people if he has everything by the.
If I have everything by the 16th of February?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could put you for a public hearing on April 6th would be our first meeting when you come back.
Let me ask you if I, is it, is it impossible and also inappropriate to attend the meeting by Zoom? Because I can do that.
We, we've had people ask that and.
And I, I'm, I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's the.
It's not practical in my mind.
They haven't allowed us to do it in the past.
Yes, that's fine.
They have a representative.
No, um, my wife's going with me.
Yeah, I think they stopped doing it after COVID.
Yep.
Now everybody can get out and about.
Absolutely.
Enjoy life a little, yes.
That's what I prefer.
Right. Face to face is easier than computer screens.
Yes.
So yeah, if you get it by the 16th, we can have the public hearing scheduled by April 6th and then I don't think anything.
If I head it by the 16th, does that give you enough time to, to, for the public hearing for the 2nd of March?
No, because unfortunately the paper that we use only runs on Thursday. So by the 16th, I, I'd have to have it, would have to be, yeah, I don't have it, I wouldn't have it.
Okay, that's fine, just asking.
It's held us up in other applications too. We're gonna, we're working on removing that from the ordinance.
Trying.
Unfortunately, it doesn't help us right now.
Right.
Yeah, because then, you said April 30th you have to be out, was it?
Yes.
Okay. That'd be work well then.
They were, they were trying to have us out by Valentine's Day.
Those chiseling out lovers.
You said that, Mr. Chairman, I did not.
Right, sometimes it happens. So that would be it, that's all we need. And then I guess by April 16th, uh, yeah, February 16th.
Yep.
Back in with all that and we can go move forward a little more.
Perfect. Now, do you need me here or do you want me to just drop it off to Jason?
No, you'll come in.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, we like visitors.
Perfect, perfect. Excellent.
Checklist.
Yeah, but you have. And schedule the sidewalk and as long as he's here, we can discuss it.
Yeah, right.
So you can do the sidewalk.
Schedule the.
Before this public hearing, you'll do, you know, you can do that.
You could go to do it in February.
Yeah.
Right before he leaves.
Ideally.
Yeah.
Try it.
Yeah, I'll be here until, I think we leave on the 8th of March, so. Would you need to get into either or both buildings on that or just walk around the outside? Because if, I, I would suspect that we would not own the property by then and they only come up on the weekends.
Well, most of our sidewalks are going to be on the weekends now.
Okay.
Ideally.
Yeah, yeah.
Owner could be there and then also, I don't know how pertinent it is to go into the buildings for us.
Yeah. Really?
What would we be looking for? I mean, Jason would take care of that at a later date.
Yeah. We just want to know what we're, the garage or the house.
Sure.
We don't have a plan.
Okay, perfect. Fantastic. Thank you, gentlemen and lady. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next up is our favorite, our guest.
Hello.
Coming back in.
I keep coming back in. I see Mr. Brock's on the board now.
Yeah.
Hi, how are you? I think I just had a beer with your mother at the public house.
My mother? Not my mother.
Not your mother?
Nope.
She told me that there was a dark haired, her daughter was dark haired and came to every planning board meeting.
Not me.
Must not be you, okay. I'm back. I, I think it might be good, um, keep things moving here to, I did provide a letter to the board. And I went through every, it'd be good to go through every point from the memo that we received from David Riley. And I received that memo from him and Jason on January 17th. And with your permission, I guess I'd probably go point by point through that memo and tell you how I addressed each one of those comments. If that's how you'd like to start.
Give me a second, I gotta find it first.
This one you just gave me yesterday.
Well, you just came in yesterday, that big guy.
Yeah. Someone's had a real job enough to work.
Pretty sure he called you last one. I don't know, I'm like.
Memoed it.
Yeah, I don't have a memo here, Matt.
This is too, I can't hear it.
This is the, this is the, the drive that you gave me.
That, that's the letter from Sewell about the traffic study. You guys had actually received that a few months ago, but I just provided eight copies because I hadn't done that yet.
I don't have a, I never got a memo, any of that package.
I got an email from David Riley and that's what I, is that it right there?
That's it.
Okay. That's what I used as a basis for this last set of revisions. I kind of went through that memo and it seems like it was very related to, you know, the largest concerns that we saw the last time around.
But you didn't actually write up a memo, did you?
No, he's referring to him.
I wrote it.
What I'd said.
You wrote.
Oh, I thought you said you wrote up a memo.
No.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I did write a memo and I, I would like to, which goes through the points that Dave made.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just went off of some.
I thought you were saying you sent, I thought you said you.
You missed four.
I thought you said you sent it to me.
What's that?
You didn't send me a memo though.
Yeah, it was part of my application. Uh, it was part of the last submission that I made. It's, it's just this letter to the planning board, that's it. I responded to Dave's email.
Oh, so it's on his email?
No, this is a, I received his email and then I wrote this letter to the planning board, which I gave to you. Which goes point by point through Dave's comments and talks about how I addressed each comment.
I don't have one in anyway, so. Give me a second. Yeah, I don't, I never.
You can still read through it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Listen to you. You know, Phil Jones, but.
So the first point in his memo was that the, the planning board was looking for more clarification on the tree planting onsite. As far as what trees we would use for reclamation and where we would plant them. So I respond to that, I responded to that by saying that a note has been added to sheet C103 on the plans. And that note is along West Shore Drive and it's along the H Road. And it says, during reclamation, native pine tree saplings shall be planted in a 20 by 20 grid pattern on the reclaimed slopes adjacent to West Shore Drive. So there's one note for West Shore Drive on sheet C103. And there's one note for the H Road. Which says that we will be required to plant pine tree saplings, native pine tree saplings. In a 20 by 20 grid pattern on those two reclaimed slopes.
Yeah, okay, so on map 103, distraction area number one, I see your note, but I'm pretty sure it needs to be changed from West Shore Drive to H Road on this particular map.
Does it say West Shore Drive?
Yes, yes.
It does?
It's one of, it's distraction area number one. And it's, and just, it's the same note on all three of the.
Oh, okay.
It's right here, it says, during reclamation, native pine tree saplings shall be planted in a 20 by 20 grid pattern on the reclaimed slopes adjacent to. And then it says West Shore Drive on all three of them. This one, C103, it should say H Road as far as I can tell.
Okay, that was a mistake that was apparently made by the engineers?
Yeah, no, it's just a, because in your operations manual, it's, it says West Shore Drive and H Road, so.
Right.
Your intent, but we get straight on there. And then for the 103, I was, would be nice if we had some sort of dimensions for maybe how far down the slope or the, you know, how far from the road the trees would be planted. As opposed to just on the reclaimed slopes is kind of ambiguous as to the size of the area. And then I would also ask that we get trees replanted in these vertical buffer areas.
Okay.
Right, the dark, you know, it kind of makes sense to me that maybe you would put trees back in those areas in distraction area number one.
That's going to be an internally drained part of the gravel pit. It's not going to be really associated with the vernal pool any longer. But if the rest of the board feels that that is a good idea, then I would certainly consider.
Yeah, I'm just looking for some other areas that seem, seem most pressing to have this vegetation put back. And that was, that one just popped into my head, but maybe we can find, find other areas that, that makes sense everyone knows would work through.
Yeah, and I, I would remind you that in the operations manual, in section 3.1, it says, "The operator may also plant native pine trees, including white pine, eastern white pine, jack pine, scrub pine, and gray pine in all reclamation areas at their own will." So it, it makes it a voluntary thing for us out there to decide whether we want to plant trees in certain areas. Specifies that we will use these, you know, particular type of pine trees which grow well in these acidic soils. In the past, at other operations, we've definitely like planted trees quite a bit. Do I necessarily want to cover the entire property in trees? No. But I think that there are certain areas where we certainly will want to plant quite a bit of trees. Hoping for a little bit of operator discretion along the way to decide where we want to plant and not plant. From my experience, no matter what you do, native trees will start to come in, no matter what. And at this point in time, as mentioned, we, you know, we do think it's a good idea to put them along West Shore Drive and the H Road. Just to create a visual buffer once the operation is done.
Well, maybe we could come up with a total area of like X number of acres will be replanted in trees. And it will include the slopes on West Shore Drive and H Road and X lines the other areas and we came up with this number of acres. So that we had some kind of quantifiable amount. And then you could pick where those acreages were.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea. Is a total of, is it 80 acres that would be developed as gravel pit, I think?
It was 80 or 83.
83, yeah.
I thought it was 72 something, 70 something.
Let's see.
I mean, I think it would maybe be fair to say 25% of the total acreage. I don't know how you feel about that, but.
Something like 20 acres.
Yeah.
Including these specified areas and that, that would.
Right.
That'd be nice.
Yeah. And if there's any, I mean, if there are any areas that you think are more important than others, then I'm all yours. I, I seem to think that the slopes are the most important, but.
It might be harder to get the trees to grow on the slopes too though, being it could be drier.
Initially, but it will help with a little erosion control.
I think that's a great place to.
Over time, yeah, yeah. You're, you're always looking for that sort of stabilization on.
Yeah. And you plan on putting some in the processing area too?
Um, I, we, as part of this application, we do have a full reclamation plan shown for the processing area. But I have not specifically said that that would be tree growth. It's open ended.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
What part of, how would you? what part of uh how would you open end it in your mind
um it's it's kinda hard to say it um I mean I I would be probably more of a fan of of the trees closer to West Shore Drive and in that area um just for kinda stabilizing that area but maybe where the processing area is kinda leave that as more of like in just an open field
okay
um that's a relatively flat area there's
that was on the first sidewalk
yeah first sidewalk yeah we went to that area
yes
yeah
not that we'll hold you to it but it just it helps the public if they ever ask well why didn't you do that
right
you're open-ended it'd be different all ours or people that actually might watch
yeah
so
true transparency
were you able to bring in the C 100 that I talked to you about yesterday
what's that the
the C 100
oh they are missing that one plan sheet that's right
in conditions
you didn't you didn't write that
no I'm sorry I did not get that
I thought I must have saved it on a different I gotta go I'll be back I have it on the electronic file but for some reason it didn't save on this disc so I'll be right back with that
that plan should not have changed at all um it should be identical to the one that was we've had before but I don't know why they forgot to include that
yeah Saint Germain notes says seventy-three acres so the notes will be corrected to show H Road
yes
and um you'll commit to twenty acres of trees
yeah I'll commit to twenty acres yeah
why you wanna go twenty-five
no I said twenty percent
I like to always barter up you know
we've done a lot of bartering uh
I never
we have I I I like that I think that's
fair amount of bartering I think on both on both sides
right yeah it's gotta be a give and take
there you go
yeah
we can't have a bad marriage
that's right Gavin you agree that pine trees are the best route here yeah
yeah it's probably
so
easy for you to source easier for you to source too right
yeah um we can get we used to get sapling small saplings up in Freiburg at the nursery up there I don't know if they still do it but um it was you know not crazy cost prohibitive and um easy to plant and they they grew well um at our Agway pit we've and we've been there for about ten years and I think some of the trees are already you know taller than me so very cool yeah
where'd you plant those at the Agway pit
on the slope it's it's right on the slope of budding Twombly Road yeah like kind of on the backside of the Old Falls
yeah
Agway
okay
yeah
I just drive by it a lot and
yeah
see like a moon crater type I don't see I don't see them because they're on that slope then
yeah I the moon crater area you're referring to is we can still we're still yeah 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 um if we're good on that one I can move on to the next one um so Dave here had mentioned um in accordance with the memo we have shown on the reclamation plan uh we've shown a reclamation plan for the wash plant slash processing area um so there is a full reclamation plan shown for that now um that's on sheet C 106 um and it shows reclamation grading for the fourteen point six acre area note four on that sheet specifies um procedures for reclaiming that area including requirements to remove all the stockpiles to drain the ponds and to fill in the ponds after use
yeah you got the wrong one there Matt
okay sorry the plan is looking
well it has the building
how about sheet sheet 104
reclamation plan non-extraction area is 106 that's what I'm looking at it has the building but it also has the wash process area hold on let me see
so the the building area does not have a reclamation plan because it's a permanent structure um but the wash plant area uh does
that wasn't the updated chart I don't think Jason must mean
no give me a second that was an old one ah I gotta change discs I got two here so he brought me another one yet the other day and I just haven't merged them together
oh yeah I need my thumb drive back Jason
no uh let me swap everything over I'll get it back to you
yeah not a big deal
so it looks like the whole processing area is gonna be drained to the north it's not gonna be internally drained
it is gonna be drained according to the um stormwater design that they do so it will be drained towards like the ponds and still kinda more towards the middle of the property as in it'll be internally drained but I can't fully tell you what the exact drainage plan will look like um the engineers assure me that the reclamation plan they're showing is very close to where it's gonna be as in when we come in and put the loom down like we will match those grades no problem um but the actual grading of that area um is gonna have to be done with the DEP through this stormwater permit um and I was gonna get a little bit more into that um because we have a letter from Saint Germain that talks about the process with the DEP for doing that um it's really about like a as I understand it's like a seven six to seven month process um and our hope is that the planning board will make that a condition of approval that you know you can be approved but not you can't do any work onsite until we get the DEP permit in hand um so as as far as the reclamation plan goes we're very very confident that what they're showing here in the plans is how it's gonna be reclaimed but how it's actually designed and pitched um I can't give you an exact answer on that until we get the permit um I would imagine that they're going to try to pitch everything towards the ponds towards the center um but that's gonna come down to to the state and to the engineers so the letter from Saint Germain uh you know it does go through the steps for all of this um it's got seven steps that are listed here um submit the pre-application form with supporting materials and schedule a pre-application meeting with the DEP um submit public notices of intent to file the application to a local newspaper abutting property owners and town of Acton within thirty days um so there'd be a little a little bit of a public process with this um submit the stormwater management law application form supporting materials they're saying that receipt of the final DEP permit could be sometimes around the first week of September so um it's a somewhat lengthy process but we're very confident that there shouldn't be any issues um yeah it's very well draining draining soils um so there's not gonna need to be like a big need for any sort of retention ponds or you know in addition to what we're showing um
that C 106 kinda it shows the wash plant area and the ponds up in the six forty region and then it just drops down six thirty six twenty within the processing area so they're actually what's here shows them in the high in kind of in the higher area of the processing area
all right
but
yeah
operating contours are gonna be different than reclamation contours
correct
yeah
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 correct I think reclamation is gonna be much more in tune with the natural topography surrounding the area where the um stormwater permit is gonna be much more in tune with making sure that the water is draining where it needs to drain to make sure that it's not exiting the area and having in you know an adverse impact um on any ecosystems nearby so and we did already submit the um permit by rule okay I'm trying to just wanna wrap my head around this real quick the per the only permit by rule that we submitted was for the vernal pool but the maintenance garage area is going to be part of the um stormwater permit as well um that area will also be taken into consideration and and kinda part of the actual permit with the DEP yeah I'm sure you guys have seen this before plenty of applications that's the permit by rule for the um the one vernal pool buffer reduction
there's two of them right
yeah oh there's two right there you're right the
are you submitting two of these permits or
that permit covers both of them
is it
because they're I think they're connected
brief description
yeah
yeah the buffers overlap but it's still definitely two separate entities
it might have two on here just um
there might be yeah there could be two on there
no just one um
we have we don't have a printed copy of that do we
yeah I think you got one from the last packet um he gave us um last meeting I think I had presented you guys with one on the twenty-fifth which I don't have on right now
I'm under the impression it was the same form for for both of them
I don't I don't know
yeah
you guys got one on
I could get that I could get that clarified easily enough
see uh does it say on there
is it the same one that's on the screen right now John yeah it's just submitted back in right before Thanksgiving
where's the um like identifying uh number for the
right here nineteen
mm-hmm
where my hash mark is
okay so it's not it doesn't specify which pool on the form it just says what type habitat they're impacting
did you do you know if he submitted pictures or did he submit the uh so
it's required to submit a location map
required to what what did you say John
he had to part of the uh forms was he had to attach a location map that clearly identifies the site
okay hold on a second
here we go
there you go I just had to scroll down
that's it that doesn't
well yeah I'm working on it I'm still scrolling down this was everything that was sent with that
so both of them are on there if that's what went in
yeah if that's the map submitted it does show
this is attached to the vernal pool um uh application so it was this is what was submitted yeah
okay so
hold on right there what does that say fifteen feet right there
where are we
that was one of the uh for the right next to the vernal pool is the distance between the edge of the
eighteen feet
excavation eighteen eighteen and ninety over the
yeah
Matt did you do any um thinking about you know making that number eighteen a little more reasonable
what what's the number eighteen
right here
that's
eighteen feet
eighteen feet
from the edge of the excavation to the edge of the vernal pool and um I was looking
oh that's what you're seeing
greatest buffer that you know that we would see on wetlands eighteen is pretty small um
okay
it was kinda like um
we go with bartering again
looks
this wasn't in Dave's uh memo so
we can't give all the secrets
we talked about it we talked about it
we did talk about it
and and we weren't sure what the distance was at the time but now you have it denoted
okay
more you were looking for more or
well eighteen feet I mean usually any sort of wetland gets a seventy-five foot buffer um I was wondering also on uh extraction area number three that one pond that we went into from West Shore Drive what the buffer distance on that was gonna be you remember it was like a pretty deep hole that one it's gonna be right in the center of the right there you can see it down a little bit right there that thing what was the uh a buffer around that pond
I think that's a zero foot buffer um it was
we'd like that some sort of buffer there
I've already given you a a very large buffer from that stream more than was required
right but this is a wetland it's a terribly different engine
it's not a wetland it's just a small body of water if it was a wetland yeah it's like a it dries up half a year um
that's how vernal pools are
it's not a vernal pool
no but it is a wetland and you know typical you know typically we get some sort of buffer there
is maybe the reclamation plan shows more clearly if there's
that's what I'm yeah
affiliated buffer there
five is what I'm thinking
do you know if it's in this set what what number you want Gavin 105 where is my what does 105 look like
105 is extraction area number three
We can just go with number four because we're talking about dust and stuff.
Okay, so this is a complaint. This is not a violation. A violation is something that is proved by a code enforcement officer, okay? So, I'm not gonna sit here and argue with you about every complaint that comes in from every neighbor out there.
No, but we're talking about a buffer and how you're gonna protect that and dust is gonna get into that. It's gonna cause sediment over time of however long you're gonna run. There is aquatic life in there. You know, you can't tell me there isn't.
I've seen-
Even though it's minimal, it's still aquatic life. I mean, someone could look at us and say, "The minimal dust won't bother us," but it does.
Then why doesn't the state or the town have a buffer requirement in place if it's...
We can set it up. It says it right here, what I just read to you.
All right. What do you propose that I do around this pond?
With you and say, "What do you think?"
What I think is that I'm...
Footage-wise, like, let's just, you know-
I'll put a 10-foot buffer around that and I'll plant trees around it, okay? If that makes you happy, I'll go back and we'll have the plans revised. We'll have the reclamation plan revised and we'll put a 10-foot buffer strip around that with trees.
I'm trying to find the... There's something in here that kinda talks about minimal buffers.
You know what I mean? No one's trying to bust anyone's bum.
Yeah, but I've been here for a year now and this is-
But you also- Yeah, but we got all this stuff-
This was just brought up.
Right, I get it.
You know?
But we got our final thing. You say a year. And there's another misconception, but it's been long, but there's a... You say a year, but we just got our final stuff in July? So, has it been a year? Not really. Let's be honest.
It's been quite a while and I am-
And it all started-
At the point, I'm at the point where it needs to be more of a formal process. What, this needs to be in writing. What you want, I need to see in writing. Because I'm feeling like I'm getting accused of lying and not meeting certain expectations. Well, you know, it's, I'm hearing that, "Oh, we're hearing from Westshore Drive this and Westshore Drive that." I do not-
Well, that's in the heat of the day.
Okay?
We're beyond that.
Well, you know, it makes me, it makes me look like a liar when I, I'm trying to follow- At this point in the stage, I think it's time for more formal guidance, yeah.
Deal with this one thing and then do it together.
What do you suggest in this case? What do you think is the right answer?
I'm Gavin.
Yeah.
Gavin's-
You're looking at page, right around page 36. It might be different because it changed.
No one wants to be preceded as long as they understand that.
Yeah, it feels, it feels really bad, especially, you know?
Uh, that's for more acreage though, I'm sorry. But it might help you-
Right, yeah. I just feel like there should be some sort of minimal buffer there. Same on the Vernal Pool. Adam, not sure the amount isn't specified. It's 75 feet for a stream. That's specified. Well, we can come back to it if you want, I mean-
No, I'm not coming back to it. It's, we're gonna resolve it right now.
So, what do you wanna do for the Vernal Pool buffer?
When I'm, when I'm done-
The 18 feet?
I can plant trees around that. A 10-foot strip, I can plant trees around it.
I'll help the Vernal Pool with the 18 foot now. We're back?
Yeah, I just think there should be some minimal setback.
I think he's talking about this-
If you wanna go back to the Vernal Pool, I'll push that to 50 feet.
Yeah, alright.
Is that fair?
Oh, it's the 18.
It's better.
You're talking about the one on the...
I'm just, I'm not, let me, I wanna look at that more closely though.
Which one? The Vernal Pool on the H Road? You're talking about that?
Yes.
Yeah, right there. That was the, the upper of the two that have the dark next to them.
I'll push both of them to 25 feet.
Well, that one's 90, so-
That one's, you already have 90 feet on that one, okay.
Maybe it was just talking about this one.
Alright.
18 on them, so we could get something-
You say 50?
Oh, that sounds reasonable.
Well, you, and this, in the nature of bargaining, if I give you your 50 feet here, what are you gonna, what are you gonna tell me about this other issue that we're bringing up now?
Let's get to that.
Yeah.
Well, that one's not clear at the same, it's a different category of wetland.
Right, but if you want me to bargain with you, I wanna know what your bargain is with me. What, you know, what do you expect on this other wetland over here? Because before I keep giving things up, yeah-
I'm gonna go back to what you just said on the little pond here. It's a 10 feet and plant trees around it.
Or leave, actually-
See some trees planted around it regardless, but we need some sort of buffer there.
Right.
Because the trees are gonna go where the-
Leave a 10-foot natural buffer, how about that?
I don't know, I think 25 is a lot better. I mean, it's like a minimal amount for a buffer, personally. But I, maybe we should consult with your, you know, with St. Germain and see what they think would be an adequate buffer.
How about 15 feet? St. Germain said that a 0-foot buffer is adequate. They've already said that right here on these plans, so...
But then they wrote "Protect Natural Resource" on the same plan though.
Well, yeah.
So, they kinda cancelled each other out, essentially.
Did you forget? I mean, I don't want, just, you know, I'm not trying to sound rude here, but don't forget that I'm protecting 93 acres of natural resource on here that we're donating to a land trust. That's 93 acres of land that no one's ever gonna touch, ever again. It'll be in perpetuity that will be protected. You know, and I'm talking about one little pond here on the property. You know, I think 10 feet is fine, because-
How big is that pond? Can you figure that out first, Jason?
Yeah.
I don't think I can, not on this. I don't know.
I would think it was bigger at one time and it's shrunken over size on what this now is.
Well, it looks, it has some substance.
That whole area is like 40 acres, no, you got 25 acres, 19 acres and 6 and 1/2 acres.
The whole thing is the 25, 27.
Well, you got 3A up here, 3B down here, and this is 3.
Right, it's A and B.
Oh, A and B, so 25, okay, see what you're saying. Yeah, thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so...
Probably half an acre. I don't have the program to-
You pull it up on-
Outline it.
Are you gonna tell them that?
Other map and measure it, or?
If it shows up on the other map, that's the only thing.
Probably not seeing it because of the trees.
That's not it, is it?
No. So, we can locate that stream.
Is it this one right here? Because that's what it's looking like.
That is it.
So, if it's-
Right, yeah, that's it.
If it's marked as a wetland on, I don't know why there wouldn't be a buffer on there.
Well, it's under 2 acres in size, so-
Oh, so it's a forested-
It has a designated buffer by the town.
We know the town of Acton is very stringent about larger wetlands. You know, the Resource Protection Districts that have been created across the town. But, you know, those Resource Protection Districts hampered development in this town a lot, but they were a really good thing for the environment. Well, are we gonna scrutinize every single small little wetland along the way as well? Acton already has very, very above and beyond standards when it comes to wetlands, which I've learned from past experience. A property, the property that we had on the H Road down here, you know, we had bought originally for a gravel pit and we didn't get the whole thing approved, which was probably a mistake, and then the town put in the Resource Protection Districts and we lost a significant portion of that property to the new Resource Protection Districts that the town put in. So, we know that Acton has very stringent rules when it comes to wetlands. And Acton's rules are saying that this wetland only requires a 0-foot offset. Other wetlands that are larger require a far more significant offset than you'll see in other towns. So, you know, there is some give and take on these sort of things.
What'd you say? 10 feet, 15 feet?
15 plus trees?
15 feet.
Or natural. You said, I'm not gonna hold you to it, but you said trees, but then natural, right?
15 feet, natural buffer. Leave whatever's in place there.
And then 50 with the 18 was?
25 where the 18 is.
25. I think he said-
25.
He said 50 initially, but that was just off the cuff when he was a little upset.
I think better when he's upset, he adds more to it.
Just gonna throw Mike 2 cents worth in. I mean, whether, whether or not the buffer is 10 feet or 25 feet with the, with the potential dust, airborne dust that's gonna be there, it's not gonna matter whether it's 10 feet or 25 feet, okay? What we're mainly looking for is, is protecting the actual wet zone area there, you know, and certainly, you know, leaving it a natural buffer. And then along with the silt fence, I'm assuming you were gonna do that as well, Matt, right?
Correct.
Silt fence around it, I mean.
Right. I mean, you can't just build a bubble over everything though.
No, no, you can't. No. I mean, and they have certain requirements that they're, that they have to fulfill for the dust control, so...
So, what are you thinking now?
I think 25 feet.
25 feet on both?
How about 15 feet on that, right there?
And then 25 on-
25 feet on the other side.
Well, I mean, whatever, we can have the board vote on it if you want. You know, if it's, that's, that's our only other option really is. Well, you know, if the board has a preference.
I mean, like Adam just said, it's, I mean, he knows and I know. It's not, you can't control the dust.
He's giving you, he's giving you guys some extra on the, on the other one. I mean, so I think you guys can work with him on this one too. I don't know, that's just my opinion. I, I think, I think Adam's right with this one too at the same point. I don't know, I don't really know what to say. I'm not on the board, so...
I, I'm just gonna keep my mouth shut.
Can I hold you to that?
No. I have a hard time.
I can't even bar it with him.
I, I-
I mean, I think he, it's fine what we're working here. I mean, Adam says it's, you know, we're not gonna protect it all. It's gonna fly either way. Even roadside dust, it could travel into that, essentially.
Right, well, dust isn't the only thing we're trying to-
No, and-
That's just one factor.
Right, and we don't want trucks backing in, into the wet area and stuff.
But cer- certainly leaving an edge, a natural vegetative around it as well as the silt fence that's going around there, I mean-
What do you think, John?
What's on the table? There's too many numbers.
25 and 15.
25 and 15?
25 around the Vernal Pool down on the C103 and then 15 on, around the wet-
The natural vegetation and the silt fence?
I can show silt fence on the plans.
I'm not too concerned about the silt fence, it's gonna be going like this.
Alright.
I'm okay with that. I would prefer more on the Vernal Pool, actually. I'm okay with the 15 feet around that pond.
Yeah, I'm still curious what DEP will say about the permified rule there, because maybe they have some sort of minimal buffer they'd like to see.
It was filed over a month ago, so if you don't have a response from them within 30 days, it's normally assigned, 14 days is typically assigned that they have no objection.
No, it's, it's approved. If they don't reject within 14 days, I mean, there has been a couple small instances. One, that somehow it got kicked back into review and another week or two later and they sent me back a denial letter. But that was one occasion. That's, you guys filed back in November.
Well, then let's take the 25, it's better. It's 25 and 15.
That's a good compromise.
We're still friends.
Yeah. Can we, can I request that this gets put into writing and that I receive an email from somebody, from Dave, that this specific thing is, is written down?
Yeah.
Alright. Thank you.
You had a, you had a letter last time.
That was my first one, yeah.
Well, it was that bull.
We really didn't have the video, took the video.
I've gotten some letters from the, was it North Star?
I've sent you a couple too.
Yeah.
You can pull them up if you really want.
I'm not really a letter person. I'd rather talk to you face to face, so-
Alright.
I'll be getting a letter.
Alright, what do you wanna talk about next?
The next paper.
Yeah. I have submitted, you know, I, I do wanna quickly talk about this memo that you have from the town of Sanford.
Keep on this.
Do you wanna keep on this track? Alright, 'cause this is a little frustrating to me, this whole memo from Sanford. And I understand that Bernie did his own private-
No, it wasn't Bernie.
-investigation on all this.
Dad's not, when he accepted the challenge, so it wasn't Bernie.
Your dad, your dad did tell at the, at the public hearing, "Go talk to Sanford. Ask them, we've been-"
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and so somebody did, so unfortunately that's what came back.
Sorry. Okay, oh, I'm learning that. Alright, well, that's nice. I would like to, I would like to address that. Alright, anyway, we submitted the next request from Mr. Riley. We submitted a certificate of insurance naming the town of Acton as the beneficiary. As you remember, the town of Newfield had been incorrectly listed on the last one. So, that has been submitted. We also submitted copies of the findings from the STANTEC engineering report. We have submitted three documents. One of them was 140 pages long, which was all the documentation from STANDEC. I looked at that with you guys at the last meeting when we were here. We went through it. We identified the Vernal Pool of concern. We saw what STANTEC Engineering had submitted to the state of Maine to make that determination. So, that documentation is all in at this point.
So, right, so they did their initial study, you guys, I guess with the local knowledge, and they changed that one Vernal Pool.
I got it.
And the state therefore called it not a Vernal Pool. Ty and, who was it? Ty and-
Tigan Bond.
Tigan Bond. They also did four ponds or Vernal Pools, two of which were significant. And they weren't addressed by the state. The two that were not significant were addressed by the state. So, my question now is, what about the two significant Vernal Pools? Tigan Bond or Boyd or whoever it was found? Where are they?
Tigan Bond did their, their study on the What's Left property.
Right.
Which is identified on these plans as this area. The-
In the far-
In the lower, that, that property there is where Tigan Bond did their study. And their study was in the area where we are, we're planning on doing extraction. STANTEC did the other property, which is, I call the Libby parcel.
So- I'm just trying to make sure that they're represented in here and the state knows about them.
Of course, yeah. All that information is submitted to the state.
The state didn't identify the two significant Vernal Pools that they identified in their response.
The state didn't ident, didn't recognize that they were significant?
They didn't rule on them. They ruled on the ones that were not. The two that were not, the state had them in their list of pools that were not, which included the first one that we were talking about.
Yeah.
And the ones that were significant, they didn't include the two that Tigan Bond found.
You're gonna have to explain this to me better. You're gonna have to show me which Vernal Pools you're talking about.
Call up the-
Because these-
Exactly.
IFW results?
I'm really tired of this Vernal Pool stuff. So, the response from the state, right? Right here, they identified non-significant and significant and they included the, the summary of the submissions, right? That came from STANTEC and Tigan Bond. So-
Yeah.
The first three, four pages, it's all STANTEC to include the one we had been discussing. And at the end, the last two insignificant, the two insignificant ponds that Tigan Bond, or whoever it is, found. They don't address the two significant Vernal Pools that they found.
Perhaps they didn't have to put that in the report because they were already deemed significant on the state, at the state level. I can find out why they're not in that specific report. Can I see, can I see that report, please?
I'll show you exactly.
This, John, is this the one right here we're looking at?
Yeah, so the last two of that are, alright, so that's the response from the state. This is the Ty or Tigan Bond. And you can see they identified ponds 3 and 4 as significant. And they had the pictures and, and, you know, the usual, the sheets that go with it. The state came back and they agreed that these were non-significant. These they were silent on. And so, I just wanted to make sure they were-
This report was-
Could we be missing a page? Because it's, it's the end of the page. Could we be missing a page by some chance? It's something you might wanna just look into. Maybe that, if we are missing one, I can put this to bed.
Well, if you call up the Vernal Pool sheets, there's grand total from the state, which you haven't. There's a grand total of seven Vernal Pools from STANTEC. And if you add the two from Tigan, Boyd or Bond or whoever it is, that would make a total of nine. And I don't see nine Vernal Pools on the sheets.
I can certainly talk to the engineering firm, find out why those two aren't listed on here, but I think that there's probably a legitimate explanation.
Oh, I know, right, but, you know, I just wanna make sure the Ts are close. Can you call up the last, what is the sheet?
Oh, you go back to the map? Sure.
There you go, just a couple times.
Well, the first one was STANTEC changed their mind because of-
It was a borrowed bit.
V101.
Significant Vernal Pool, buffer impact map, V102.
Yep, we got, come on, man.
What was that?
On that, did you say, um?
The last.
102, it's the last one.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
One up here too, I think.
7, 8, 9, 10, I'm not sure. Alright, it's all on.
There's a chance that those weren't included in this report because they're outside of the area where we're-
But why would they include the ones that were non-significant that were also outside the area?
Can't tell you that, but it is my burden as an applicant is to be responsible for the pools that are within the area I'm developing.
Well, I know, but you, you wanted to identify those in case the 250-foot buffer overlapped into your area. They don't.
They don't.
That's why you wanted to look at it.
Yeah. If we're looking at, are we concerned about two Vernal Pools that sounds like they're not in the area that-
I just re-looked on this and I, I think I missed it on the other one. I think they are all on there now. It's just, it's, it's frustrating that, that we were given at the very beginning a submission, right? And then all of a sudden, things didn't line up. And all of a sudden, well, it changed because of local knowledge for that one, for that one pond. Okay, well, it's kind of a big deal. And then when I, when I saw Tigan Bond had found two, I was looking for them in the charts and I couldn't see them. I just counted about up here on, on whatever it is, 102, 202, and yeah, it seems like they're there, so... I'm done with Vernal Pools. I'm very disappointed though in the way the professionals handled it. Not gonna impact your, your application, but it was a very unprofessional way to do things. Things should've gone to the state that apparently didn't. However, they were recorded, so that's good on, on, on the, on the charts. And, and the professional changed his opinion when your local knowledge got him to change his opinion on Vernal Pool.
It wasn't my local knowledge.
Whose was it?
It was the local knowledge of people who lived in this community for years.
Here's the problem.
They had to talk to somebody who-
Are you accusing me of trying to manipulate this process because?
I keep seeing, hearing, "Oh, just wanna know who the local knowledge is."
I was in meetings that we sat at here where there was, there was a lot of, there was an old timer that was here at many meetings who was talking to everybody outside about how that was man-made, you know?
Local knowledge dies off eventually. So, if someone's to look at that years down the road, who they gonna say to?
But I'm done. I'm done with Vernal Pools. I had, I said my piece. I'm done with Vernal Pools.
Moving forward.
I didn't realize I was gonna have to defend myself so much tonight. I, you know?
Oh, you didn't get the memo about the flak jacket, huh?
The what?
Flak jacket.
No.
Oh.
Yeah.
What's a flak jacket?
Oh, that's a joke.
Oh.
So, those are the, that's what I saw from the memo from Mr. Riley. And I, we, I thought we did a good job addressing those comments. There were some additional things that we did along the way. We have submitted a letter from St. Germain Engineering, which gives a recommendation to the planning board on the performance bond amount for reclamation. St. Germain recommended $4,500 per acre and that's their recommendation for what it costs to reclaim these sites. And that's, that's from their expertise in this industry and that's in accordance with what the DEP requires.
You agreed to the $6,000 that was presented to you, Matt?
Agreed. And I will stick with the $6,000, but I think that we wanted to prove without a doubt that that amount would cover what you're looking to cover, above and beyond. Because the, I heard, I was hearing a lot of different conversations from the town about what was required and what wasn't. And I think Dennis was here saying that-
Matt, what can you, what can you reclaim with $2,000? That's what they charge?
Nothing, you can't. That's ridiculous.
So, let's get past that conversation.
Oh, I am past that conversation. I'm, I'm agreeing to the $6,000. But, you know, I think that the board wanted clarity from somewhere on, is this enough? And I think that this letter proves that it very much is.
Well, for this time in day and age, but years down the road, it did not be.
Correct, and that's something that the town ordinance should probably address.
That's why we're doing a little more. I mean, we could always do more if you want.
So, let's get a note, 3.3 reclamation performance guarantee in the, in the operations manual here. It's changed at $4,500 to $6,000.
Oh, they, they decided to change it in the-
Change the operations, did I notice?
I will, yeah, that was, I rolled with the letter. I'll change that back to $6,000.
There's in this policy manual, but it's the second to last page. It's 3.3.
And in accordance with the town ordinance, that can be cash, a letter of credit or a surety bond. It can be one of three forms of payment. Yes.
Do you have the performance guarantee with the state? Do we have that?
That will be filed, that would be filed after the application is, if it's deemed complete. That would then be filed with the state of Maine. The variance permit with the state of Maine is the, is the procedure you go down. And that will be, whether the planning board requires it or not, it will be required- And that will be, whether the planning board requires it or not, it will be required by the state because if you open more than 10 acres of gravel pit, you have to have, if you have more than 10 acres of open area, you have to have a variance permit with the state of Maine. As, as an operator, I don't necess, I don't necessarily need to do that until I'm ready to open more than 10 acres of, of land on site. But if the planning board wants to make that a condition of approval where it's, you know, get the variance permit through the DEP, I have no issue with that. I, you know, I can file it. It, it does cost me to have that, you know, with the state, even if I'm not out there, you know, if I'm not out there digging, I still have to carry the weight of having the bond, you know? But if the, you know, if the board wants to see that as a condition of approval, that I get that with the state and I submit that to the town, I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, I think that's where it's going. And you're gonna have the, I'm just going through the YOPS plan now. You're gonna have the right-of-way agreement and the land donation agreement finalized, you're writing. We, we had a letter early on where they said, yeah, we'd be happy to take it.
Yep. I will... I have to think about how to do that, because I'm not gonna sign that until I have an approval. So if you want to make it a condition of approval that I have to, I can give you a copy of the agreement that we're intending on signing, and if you want to make that a condition of approval, I'm okay with that. But I'm not going to sign anything until
No, I wouldn't.
we've, we have an approval.
Again, that's, I was thinking.
I just want the operations manual.
Oh, see that?
It's right here.
Other changes, I eliminated asphalt being brought to the site. That was something that Gavin cared about. I put in the manual that the, the act and CEO would be notified when dredging of onsite wash ponds takes place, so he can monitor the process.
I, I know I had you put that in there, Matt, but I don't have the ability to really monitor it. I mean, I think, I don't know. You know what I'm saying? I, I don't want to be responsible. I can't, if I go down, you know what I'm saying? I'm not a, I don't have the equipment or the knowledge to be able to say, okay, this is where you are.
Do you want me to remove that? Because I put that in.
Well, it just says you notify.
Right, notify us, yeah. But it was, it was, most of it was to make sure that it wasn't below, we weren't below the water table. That was, it was notifying, but the reason why it was notifying it was so that we can ensure that certain things were being followed. Followed, yeah. You know what I mean? Not saying that you wouldn't. I'm just saying that that's kind of where, where it goes. So I don't really know where to go with that one.
I do have a requirement to, in the groundwater monitoring plan, a very strict requirement that requires me to submit information to the town every spring on where the water level heights are at onsite. And part of that submittal could also include submitting the water level heights at the piezometers, which are around the wash pond. Piezometers are, it's just a PVC pipe. It, it might not be as accurate as a well that's drilled into the ground. But, you know, you could, we could submit information from those piezometers as part of the spring report. If that was a better alternative. But again, I, I really don't want to have to pay to put in wells right there. I think that a piezometer is fine for what we're trying to do.
That's the PVC plant?
That's the PVC, yeah.
How about if we, had you have an engineered survey once a year? So we're on the up and up.
No.
And why is that?
That's, that's extremely expensive. That's, having a survey and plans drafted, that's, that's, that's a lot.
What are you, survey for the whole acreage you talked about, Chris?
No, for...
What, open area or the ponds or?
Ponds, the dredging of the ponds and whatnot, stuff like that. I don't, I think it's, I mean, he can't tie him up all the time. Not, not now, you don't tie him up all the time, but it'd be tying him up on every pit. If he just did that, it's easier.
So you have many, how many pits?
It's easier on you, it's easier on him.
I don't know of any other gravel pit owners that are required to do annual surveys of their...
None of your pits that you have, you don't require to do a survey once a year? An annual survey?
The town of Stanford is the only town where we have to, every five years, we have to do a survey and submit a plan.
But they're gonna change that here.
They're, we are currently working with the town on changing the ordinance, so that they get, they want to get rid of the five-year thing.
They want to license you once a year.
Um...
That's what I was told. They want a one-year license?
There's been some talk about that. There's gonna be more of a stringent inspection process, for sure, with the town, where it's gonna be annual inspections, but it's not necessarily renewing your license every year.
But what about your, what about the stipulations on Newfield? Is Newfield requiring a survey once a year, almost maybe bi-yearly?
No. Newfield does not require a survey.
I was misinformed.
Who should I call?
Go ahead.
Well, I mean...
I remind you that, you know...
Here's the problem. He doesn't have the equipment to do this, you know, to make sure you're not, if he just an engineered survey once a year, per se, they have these, they have the equipment.
How did, what, what surveying firm can measure the depth of, of the ground under a pond? You know, like, how do you even survey that? You...
What about your open acreage? Your open acreage? They, they don't survey that once a year, something like that? Not your ponds, but your open acreage, do they survey that?
No. They can, they, they're pretty swept with Google Earth and they can jump right on there and they can tell if I'm over acreage fairly easily. And they've been talking about doing, as part of their inspection process, maybe getting drones and and flying over, which I don't think is a bad idea at all. I think it's, it's a good, quick way to identify how much open acreage is on a site. But a lot of towns honestly use, they use Google Earth.
What does the DEP do?
The DEP definitely uses Google Earth as well. Yeah. And if they come in and they have reason to believe that you're open acreage, then they can require you to do a survey. If, if they have like strong reason to believe. I'm sure the town could do that as well. You can, you know, show on Google Earth that the acreage is way over. Then you can kind of quickly request that the, you know, the landlord does a survey.
I've never really used Google Earth, so how often do they update Google Earth? Because I, I've looked at Google and it's been, and it showed a pool in someone's yard, but it hasn't been there for five years.
Yeah.
So that's my issue with that one.
I think it's on a two or three-year thing right now. Yeah.
I, I'm not gonna say that's a good, a best way to go. There's a lot of material, and it's a lot of acreage in two years that you guys can pump up.
Yeah. I mean, it's not in our best interest to do that because that's, that's how you get shut down.
I'm just concerned with the size of this project and the amount of the extraction. You've got extraction going over here, you've got extraction going over here, and then you have a huge area in the middle. I just don't... I don't, I just don't have any way. I always get, people always complain to me, it's always my job to enforce it. How do I enforce it, Matt?
And here's the other...
You know, I, I, I get complaints about the trucks. I can't enforce trucks. That's not, it's the roads and it's the police, it's nothing like that. You know, and then I'm stuck with, you know, you're stuck, you're allowed to do so much open acreage. How do I enforce the open acreage?
You could sit at the gate of any gravel pit in town.
No, 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 but I don't care about the trucks. The trucks ain't, that's not my issue. I really don't care. My, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, I'm trying to, and it's not just you, trust me, this is gonna, this is, this is for everybody. It's just... It's, you're just the one in front of us right now, and you happen to be the first one that I'm dealing with. But I just, I'm tired of people pointing the finger and saying it's an enforcement issue. But I don't have the means or the ways to enforce things or to monitor these things.
There's, there's clearly steps that the town needs to probably take then if you have these concerns, that, that these things can be addressed through your ordinance.
I get that, but our ordinance right now is so... I'm gonna use the word pathetic to mineral extractions. It really is, there is no ordinance for mineral extractions.
Right. I, you know, I, I'm not gonna comment either way, but
No, I know, because it's easy for you guys to come in.
I'm here and I read the ordinance, and when I put these...
Alright, so not every year. How about every two years you get an engineered survey?
Of the pond?
Everything.
No, I'm not surveying the entire property. That, that's way above and beyond.
Oh, the extraction areas, not the whole entire property.
You're concerned about the ponds.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned that...
What are you concerned about?
He gets complaints, you're gonna keep tying them up.
Yeah.
Every pit is different.
Right.
Every, you can't point fingers at the other person down the road from you, you can't, you know? He's unlimited capabilities. Not in a bad way, but you know? But the problem is if you keep tying them up and he keeps getting complaints, it's just gonna be costly. And if you do this every two years, it keeps you on the up and up, it keeps the town, you know, free and, and he can do other things. See, this is where we're...
It was just something to bounce off you and see what you thought.
Bounce and things.
I'm, I...
Bounce the earth, move it to two.
I mean, I'm sorry, I, I need to be held under the same scrutiny that every other gravel pit in town is held under.
You're a bigger gravel pit, so...
Matt, I get that. Matt, I get that. That's why I was, I was kind of asking what your thoughts...
A few gravel pits in town, what?
That's why I was asking what your, your thoughts were on that. You know, it's not, we're not...
Are we concerned, I, I thought at first we were concerned about the depth of the ponds. I thought that's what we were talking about?
Well, it's both.
Are we talking about
Trickle into other...
That, or are we talking about open acreage?
Well, it started with the pond and then you brought in open acreage, so it kind of trickled into both.
Okay, so we're talking about both. Okay.
Kind of now, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you, we, everybody brought it that way, essentially.
Right. So your concern with the ponds is that I'm gonna dig too low
Right.
in that I'm...
And how's he gonna measure it? Gonna go out there with a fishing weight and, you know, leg to a line and troll it? And check the depth?
I mean, you're, you're, you're doing this all next to a, a spring-fed lake that replenishes itself every 10 years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Outside of the...
Five feet over the, over the water table.
It'll be a minimum of five feet. It might be higher, depending on how the...
Or it could be lower because I don't have the means to tell this, correct?
It definitely won't be lower than five feet. This is, I mean, it's, I'm not processing, you know, contaminants out here or anything like that. This is washing stone. The only thing that's going into this pond is silt. So even if there was a mistake and we went into the groundwater, there's, it's, it's gonna be a pond. I mean, it's silt. It's not, I'm not putting like tree bark and like vegetative waste in here or anything like that. It's the same dirt that left the site that is essentially going into the pond, just in a different form. So I don't think that there is an overwhelming concern, you know, about an impact to, to, to a water body as a result of this. And I can talk to the engineers and see if they want to give me advice on how you can monitor the height of the ponds. I can certainly do that. I mean...
Matt, is there any way to put some sort of a riser or anything in place so that you know, you know, in, in say, a couple different places within the settling ponds? So
Yeah.
You can't dig down below this mark?
Yeah.
I mean, would that suffice?
The water table could change, though.
True. But that's what the monitoring wells are for. Will tell you what the water table is, correct?
Because I don't care about your ponds. I care about Square Pond. Like you can, honestly, that's my biggest concern is, I mean, that's, that's our home.
Yeah. I care a lot about Square Pond as well. I really do.
And it's changed already, just throughout the years. I mean, look at the river that I live on. That's changed. And that's only coming from people that have moved from away and they've used fertilizers and ruined that river, which is actually a protected watershed. I see the change. I've seen it from the 70s to the 80s to the 90s to now. I mean, and it's getting worse. You can't even paddle in it. In the mid-sun, you can't paddle in the river because of the pesticides that have helped grow all this other stuff. Now, is it my, our due diligence to question you this? Yeah?
Yeah.
And I have kids. You're gonna have kids someday. What are you gonna leave for your kids? A cracked-up pond, essentially?
No, absolutely not. I mean...
I'm sure you don't want to leave it, but you gotta think that way.
Of course I do. Yeah. I mean...
Think of your neighbors.
Of course.
Stuff like that. And I've talked to old timers that lived on Square Pond, and they've seen the change from the 50s to now.
Yeah. And hey, well, you know, let's, there's a, let's talk about the camp owners on Square Pond that have lawns and fertilize their lawns every single year.
We can go on and on. You want to open up that can of worms? We can go on and on about it.
Oh, we can, this conversation could roll for hours, you know?
I'm saying...
I don't...
It's a concern, and it's a concern for a lot of people, all the emails that we have. I mean, and, you know, just from the public county you hear. I mean, you've heard the concerns, I mean...
I have very much heard the concerns, but I, I do again want to emphasize that
So you heard them.
The plans, the plans that I'm giving to you are from engineers who are registered in the state of Maine, who would not put their stamp to a set of plans that would have an adverse effect on the, on the environment. So you have to understand, these are, these are professional engineers that are putting these plans together and stamping them. So it's their livelihood that's on the line if something goes wrong with Square Pond, as much as it's my livelihood. And, you know, you have to trust that. It, it's, these are the professionals. These, these small ponds are outside of the town's aquifer protection district, which the town created to protect Square Pond. So we are outside of that aquifer protection district. And well over 500 feet, probably further from Square Pond. You know, all the engineering is there. It, it is. You have to trust it. And if you, and I am...
The only question was the monitoring aspect.
Yeah.
I mean, we understand the engineers, but the question was, how do we monitor?
How you monitor the heights.
What did Reagan say? Trust but verify?
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay. I liked the idea for maybe some sort of pedestal that we install in the pond, so that it, it's like a, some sort of datum. It's on like a set datum, like USGS datum. And that tells you exactly what height you're at. So you could take the set of plans. You could be at that pedestal. You could stick a tape measure right down into the pond, and you could see how deep it was. I mean, that's, that's a common sense solution. You could get in a small canoe and go out on that pond and drop a rope down and pull that rope up, and you could measure the rope to see how deep the pond is. I mean, we just need, we gotta think of something common sense here.
I can't wait to tell somebody how I monitored your pond by dropping a rope down.
You gotta measure the rock there or the weight that goes down because it could short us to a knee.
Right.
And no one wants to be...
That's a good point.
My concern is just, like I said, my concern is just how to, to just to verify everything is, I don't have the means to do that. And, and so that was just the concern that I had. I don't know what to do about it. I was asking you what you thought, you know, I had, you know, Chris was asking me what you thought. It's, it's just trying to figure things out so that it makes it easier for everybody and you don't get in trouble. I don't have, I don't get caught with my...
Pants down.
I wasn't gonna say that. I was kinda looking there, but... And I'm not saying you are gonna break the rules or anything like that, but it happens. You're not on your pit, you're not there all the time, right? So you have an operator who's maybe not...
As diligent as you would be. Because...
You know, I mean, you, you must understand where I'm coming from when I, when I say this.
I, I do, but...
I'm not saying, like, I'm not saying it because I feel that you're gonna be, you're not gonna play by the rules, but it's just, it is what it is, you know?
I understand your concern. I, I, I think it's very warranted. I could talk to, I could talk to a surveyor and say, how, how would you find out, how would you measure this? What would you do to measure this? And maybe it's, if you guys think that maybe it's a bi-annual report from a surveyor that says this is where the base level of this pond is at. You know, I'm, I think I'm open ears for that, but do I think that your concern about, you know, digging too deep, i- if that did happen, you know, God forbid, that that would be devastating to Square Pond? No, I don't, because I know a lot of people who dig ponds in their backyards throughout Acton, Maine. Many homeowners who dig ponds into the water table level. And they have no adverse impacts on other, on other bodies. Many homeowners who dig ponds into the water table level, and they have no adverse impacts on other bodies. And I also know that the DEP allows excavation below the water table with the certain, with certain parameters in place. So my only, my only point is that I think that it's a little overblown to say that this, by digging a little bit too deep into this pond, that all of a sudden Square Pond is gonna turn a different color.
Matt, so just, let's go back to, so this is my concern, and this is like, and I know this might be before you or anything like that, and this was from Sanford. An open area of approximately nineteen point seven acres, the amount approved by the city in two thousand thirteen was fifteen acres, and the DEP was nineteen acres, both standards was, were violated.
Maybe I might be able to work that.
Okay, let's go in, let's go in these one by one.
But this is my concern, so how do I know how this is not gonna happen? That's four acres over what you're allowed to open.
Enforcement is, I can't...
Enforcement, thank you. I can't enforce that.
I can't answer these questions for you.
I can't monitor.
I can try to do my best to help you answer these questions, but...
Let me give you another one. Excavation below a minimum separation distance?
Hold on, you're not allowing me to...
Five feet. Well, I'm giving you my two big problems.
Yeah.
You went below five feet.
Yeah.
Correct. And you went over, over an acreage. How are we not gonna, how are we gonna prevent that?
When I came to Pepin, when I started first working at Pepin Concrete, which was eight years ago, I came in, I had, I was, from another company, and my father was operating this pit. And he was not on top of everything, and I will admit that. He went over his acreage and there was one area on site where he dug a little bit too low. So, I am now the owner of our Pepin and Sons Inc. I recently bought Pepins. I am a different owner. So I'm not the same owner that was running this gravel pit. And since I have been running this gravel pit for the company, these violations have been non-existent. They're no longer. The other thing that, when I read through this memo, I don't know if you know anything about Mrs. Delevau, but she is one of the most difficult people that I've ever worked with in my entire life. She is one of the most... I don't want, I don't wanna make it personal.
The planner?
This is the planner. And some of these, this, I could get into the details, I know the details well on all of this. But she got to the point where she was trying to attack us and, like, this stuff here about how we dug too close to the vicinity of the Great Works River is a hundred percent incorrect. The finished slopes thing is incorrect, the revegetative standard thing is incorrect. And then she goes on, she cites all of these complaints that were brought into the city.
But if he took a plane, he's gonna cite, bring him up as well.
He's...
Well, you just put him in the...
Oh, yeah, no, right, correct, but I'm telling you that it was a precarious time, it was eight years ago. I was not involved with this gravel pit. I was just coming onto the scene, and I got all this corrected. And with the DEP, it was actually really quick and simple. They said, you guys dug too low, we want you to fill that back in with the same type of materials that were taken out, because we've seen this before. So get it done, get it done right away. The town of Sanford said, whoa, 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 you need to wait until after the approval process, no matter how long it takes, to fill that area back in, which seemed very counterintuitive to me. Why wouldn't you wanna fill that in right away? Why wouldn't you, that's what the state wanted. They wanted to fill those little areas in immediately, and that's what often happens. But the town put the brakes on it and said, you can't fix this until we go through this whole process. So, this is one gravel pit owned by our Pepin and Sons Inc. We own four altogether. And we are in compliance in, right currently, in all four of those gravel pits, we are a hundred percent in compliance with the town and with the state. So this is one example. It's not, it doesn't demonstrate who we are as operators. We had a few mistakes and we had a planning director that was really, really tough to work with. And a city engineer, Mike Cassely, who was one of the, also very, very difficult to work with. There's a reason why Sanford has a reputation as not such a business-friendly place. That's what, and that's what I'll say about this memo.
That was, yeah, that whole, that whole, like, that's why, you know, and I'm not, I'm, you know, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm stuttering, Mike, but... And yeah, you might be a different operator, different owner, whatever it is, but my concern is how do we prevent this stuff?
You gotta kinda look at it as a bar owner. If you're over-serving all the time, it's our duty to say, if you're the bar owner coming in...
Right. Do you have, so, okay, the code enforcement officer can...
Try to help wrap up this part of the discussion?
Yeah.
That two point one four onsite board relaunch plan, you provide some information about what you're gonna do to ensure you don't dig too low.
Okay.
Put that right in the ops manual, whatever you're gonna do, and we'll see if we think it's sufficient, I guess. I know I previously suggested you actually line the ponds with some sort of fabric liner, but, you know, maybe we can come up with something else, cause you didn't like that idea. So whatever, you know, any way that you can ensure you're not digging too low, how are you gonna know as you do it? So get that in there. And in terms of the total acreage, the town has largely been, we lean on the DEP for that. They're usually the ones that are actually using Google Earth, I guess, to check the acreage.
One simple solution I was gonna mention is, Jason can, you can literally come into our pit anytime. And you could quickly walk around the perimeter of the pit with one of these hunting apps that they have now, and it'll pull a area for you very quickly. You could walk into any gravel pit in Acton, and you could just walk around the perimeter of that pit and take GPS points and go on your cellphone, and it'll spit out an acreage for you.
Yeah, I didn't think of, I have that, I have that.
That's a really quick and easy thing to do, and you have permission to come onto our site anytime you want to, to do that. You know, you do, and it's simple. It'll give you a rough idea. And actually a pretty close idea, you know?
Matt, when you, what are you gonna be using for equipment for when you're digging down the pond, just out of curiosity, typically?
An excavator.
Any chance of a 2D system on that?
I don't, I'm not hooked up with the grading electronics, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, dude.
Right.
GPS, you know, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud as far as, cause that will give you your, if you have a base point...
Right.
When you're digging, you know, I'm not saying a 3D system, but a 2D system would at least give you depth and so forth.
That's true.
And...
When the ponds are dug out though, since we're not digging below the water table, it's gonna be dry. So we will be able to pull elevations with just a regular transit when we're digging the ponds. It's when they fill up with water that...
Right.
You know, and you're dredging the pond out, I guess that's when the...
That's why I say that...
That's where that would probably come in handy.
That's where that would probably come in handy.
It would, yeah.
And just something you might wanna look at as a, might be a lot less costly than some of the other measures, just...
Yeah, that's good advice, yeah. Yeah, I've considered looking into that. I think the units themselves are pretty expensive, aren't they?
They are, they are. But like I said, you know, 3D is a lot more expensive, but I don't think you need a 3D system for that. A 2D system would work fine for that, just for, just for depth and elevation, so.
Okay.
Just throw that out there.
That's interesting, yeah.
Maybe expensive, but more fines are expensive.
That's true. Okay, so, let's move on to the list. You said you wanted me to better define what work will take place onsite between the hours of six to seven AM pertaining to onsite maintenance. I clarified that in the operations manual, and I clarified that excavators will not be permitted to operate until seven AM. That's in section two point one of the operations manual.
Yeah, you've got equipment maintenance onsite will begin along with snow plowing and other site preparation including, but not limited to stockpiling and berming and road maintenance. Six to seven o'clock. There'll be snow plowing, other site preparation including, but not limited to stockpiling and berming and road maintenance.
Yeah, I think those hours now agree with what we talked about.
You happy with the hours of operation?
On the next page though, Matt, earlier you had, earlier operation plans, I think very early on, you said you would limit truck traffic to five trips per day during the weeks of Fourth of July and Labor Day, and the new plan says fifteen trips per day.
I'm thinking that this was a negotiation I wanted to talk about tonight, because at the last meeting, we made the decision I would have no trucks on Saturdays throughout the entire summer. And that impacts me a little bit as an operator. So in return, I was hoping that instead of five trucks, was it, per day, it'd be fifteen for those weeks. And I, that's open for discussion, but it did, it does impact me not being able to go Saturdays for the, you know, the entire summer. That's, and that's something that I agreed to.
We only said that due to safety reasons on, for the dump.
Right.
You guys would be closed on holiday, the holidays anyway, though.
Yeah, we're closed on holidays anyway, yeah. So I was hoping for a little bit more flexibility on those holiday weeks for more than five trips per day, which was, is a very minimal amount. That, fifteen trips is enough just for me to kinda keep the material coming to the concrete plant and kinda keep the stone, keep my guys busy a little bit, keep the stone coming in for a load of concrete. Just enough to keep my primary business operations going those two weeks. You know, I realized that five trips a day is one driver going in there that whole week. You know, and I really kinda need like two or three going in there, just to kinda keep up with what I'm doing.
Just wanted to know why I changed it, since...
Compromise.
Yeah, thank you. And I changed the crushing hours to nine, the start for crushing, nine AM.
At five thirty?
Not five thirty.
I'm sure you read that one.
I said crushing will not be permitted within two hundred feet of the property. You know, I did miss that, that berm thing, and I wanna apologize for that. I'm gonna change the berm to twenty feet. Yeah.
Yeah, someone brought that up in the public meeting.
That's one thing that I messed up on. I didn't, I should've writ that, wrote in that down.
I don't know if this was agreed to, but, I guess I'm not sure on the planes now, but your neighbors requested a hundred and fifty feet from West Shore.
That was told to them.
That was told to, it was told to them, a hundred and fifty feet, and then they gotta drop to a hundred. Where did we end up on that? Cause I don't remember. I don't think we really discussed it.
I think he said, Matt said he didn't want, he wasn't for that.
For what?
My dad.
A hundred, Matt didn't even agree to that in the first place. It was his dad stating it.
So you want the hundred and fifty?
With a hundred feet.
Right, it's a hundred on the...
Right, yeah. It is a hundred.
Yeah. And with the twenty-foot berm?
With a twenty-foot berm, yeah. And there is, somewhere in these plans, it does say that the berm has to be constructed before excavation takes place. That's either in the operations manual. It does, it does say that I can't get rolling out there until the berm is up, but...
Into a...
Yeah.
Yeah, it does say that.
And then the only last thing that I have here in my memo is that we did go have a surveyor go out and he identified exactly where that red gate is on the H Road. And that is where the right-of-way is gonna enter. And we also identified where the right-of-way was going to end. And my dad has an interest in using that right-of-way, sharing that right-of-way with Three Rivers Land Trust, so, just so that he can enter onto his property for maintenance purposes. It's not gonna turn into some big paved highway. The right-of-way is only ten feet wide. It's enough for like a maintenance, basically one vehicle to kinda go in there, you know, for maintenance purposes. And the exact location of where it's gonna start and where it's gonna end on the Three Rivers Land Trust parcel is now on the plans. But I, as I think you remember, the right-of-way can be, the middle of the right-of-way can be moved at our discretion as long as we provide some sort of pathway for us.
So you're talking about what do you, what do you call it, the land left behind, that the remaining land that's gonna be in tree growth? So that, so that David can access that, is that what you're talking about?
Basically, the right-of-way takes you to the upper portion of the what's left property?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was one thing, we discussed that before, I was asking if there was, if it was gonna be used to access that.
You're talking Willow Street?
No.
Talking on the left side right below in Extracellary Number One. The right-of-way that comes in.
Oh, this one right here?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not fully visible in there, but that's where it is.
That was the one that just, they described saying they were gonna have no trucks, Pepin trucks on there, right?
Yeah.
No commercial vehicles.
No commercial vehicles. And it does say that right in the operations manual, that...
Yeah. But now you're saying it is gonna be used to access...
It'd be like a shared maintenance right-of-way. I can show you.
What would he be maintaining by using it?
This, this area right here is, it's actually a really big hill right here, and it's like a really good view of the lake. And my dad's talked about maybe just putting like some picnic tables up here and kinda having like, just like a cool hangout spot. So the right-of-way would allow him to kinda come in and just come along and come in and do like any sort of maintenance that he wanted to do here, because it's really hard to get to this spot from down on West Shore Drive. It's a big, steep hill. There's not really, there's no road at all, there's just some crazy logging paths. So he'd like if he could come in here and just have like some sort of like recreational area for himself. This is his retirement project right here. That's what he's gonna be doing in retirement.
So I guess just my, my only question about that was, the, you know, are we gonna be looking for a berm by rule for the impact on those runoff pools as you squiggle through them to get over there? As the road, you know, goes through those buffers, is that something we should be looking for? Cause originally, the right-of-way was just for Three Rivers to access the parcel.
Yeah. I do, that's a good question. I mean, I see that the road goes through what appears to be a wetland right there.
One of the previous plans showed it kind of actually squiggling in. This one doesn't show it going far.
This plan should actually show it squiggling in, because we have no intention of going through a wetland, I can...
No, you're, you're gonna be going right through those buffers, so I feel like there is a third, there's now a third runoff pool right there that's gonna be impacted, that could be going through the buffer and and how concerned are we with getting that DEP berm by rule to cover that one as well?
We do not intend on impacting that wetland and...
Probably the only tool in the physical buffer to get in there. So that's the road, the portion of the road would be the impact. It would certainly be less than the twenty-five percent permitted.
There's not a trail there already, currently there?
So...
That doesn't wrap around and create a trail?
There is a trail right there that goes through, like an existing trail.
Is that the one that we...
Yeah, if you bring up...
There's another map that shows it.
C one oh three shows it pretty well.
Well, one oh, C one oh two shows it. Yeah, two trails.
This one Gavin, you, you're talking about?
Yep.
Yeah.
You can see the third.
Oh, wait a minute. Give me a second, sorry.
Right there, you can see the, the southernmost of the three pools that are kind of in a line there. You're going to be going right through that one. You can tell this is the buffer right here, which is contiguous with the previous one here. So they are going to be impacting the third vernal pool here by disturbing the buffer. So I just, it would make sense to, um, get that permit by rule sent in.
Well, it's a fifty foot right of way?
Yeah, on the map it is.
I was told it was ten feet wide.
Fifty foot right of way to be shared by Three Rivers Land Trust and Abutting Lot.
I had a conversation with Carl Davis where he, he told me it was ten feet. I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's just that on the plan it says fifty.
The plan says fifty.
That's wider, that's wider than the H road.
Well, there's probably, the road probably only going to be ten feet, but that the right of way is fifty. But we do need a little bit of clarity.
Yeah, the plan says a roadway, uh, by the gravel roadway that is approximately ten feet wide.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, where does that say that?
One point six.
It's in the operations manual.
In the operations manual. Okay. Well, there's a, okay. I mean, yeah, I agree that, I think that should be changed. I, it should be the same across the board, ten feet wide. Uh, I think maybe, maybe twenty feet's probably more reasonable because you got to have, you know, you got to clear a little bit of trees, you got to have a road. Um, twenty feet wide and I can address the vernal pool thing. There might be an existing.
Uh, you can see the trails here, the trail system kind of.
Comes up that way.
But you still have to get there.
It's funny though, because it's almost like there's a trail that's missing because we, we walked in from that gate and there was a logging road that comes from that gate right along there that we were walking on during the site walk.
No, we never went all the way down there.
We came, we came, we came here.
Yeah.
We, we followed this.
That's about as far as we got.
Right.
I don't think we ever even walked out this way, did we?
No, I don't think so.
I think we stopped right, right around here.
Yeah, cause we're not interested in the donated parcel.
Right.
No, that's red gates there.
The gates there though, which is like.
It belongs to tails where.
Yeah.
No, that was the main entrance.
I thought that was. There's another, there's a, there's another trail system that came out right around here on H road.
Yeah, just a little view. Yep.
It just doesn't show it. Right here. Nope, that's, that's the entrance, isn't it? Right here?
Well, it's right next to the new entrance.
Yeah. Anyway.
I'm under the impression that there is a trail right there where that gate is. And, um, if there's an existing trail, then I could have it surveyed. Um, if there isn't an existing trail, then Gavin's correct and I should, I'm going to have to adjust the permit by rule so that, you know, you can put a trail through there, which wouldn't be a huge adjustment.
Right.
But, yeah.
How many acres in tree growth Matt?
Currently, the whole property is in tree growth. Um, Livy was very adamant about having, you know, he was a logger, so he.
Well, he gets a break on the property when he puts it in growth, right?
Right. And I would like to ask if everything, if he gets approved, the areas that are still forested, I would like to talk to the forester and have the tree growth plan modified so that those are all, you know, in tree growth. Um, cause really, I really have no other intentions for the property aside from this and there's no reason why not to.
So in the future, when you have harvest done, is this going to be your access to get to that part of the parcel? What, what would be your, to have your harvest done in the future in the tree growth plan? What would your access be to this southern parcel that we're kind of talking about the he's been leading to? Cause I'm wondering if this right of way might be used for that purpose in the future.
For logging?
Well, yeah, extracting the wood out of there.
Um, I, I suppose it could be.
I know you said no commercial vehicles can go in, so that would kind of prohibit them, right?
Uh, yeah.
But it seems like that could be some of the maintenance activities that your dad is really thinking about.
Yeah, but I, I don't, I feel like a logger could, could get to his property any number of ways. It wouldn't have to be this way. Um, I mean, we're, those skitters can come from pretty much any direction.
So you'd come in from West Shore Drive then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Just when I'm looking at the map, something came to mind.
Right.
Again, I'd like, I'd like to see the right of way drawn on there fully. Cause it wa, it was in the previous.
Yeah, I don't understand why they changed it. It was.
It looks like it has almost like a.
Yeah.
An intersection indicated now, which wasn't there before as well.
changes hands, that they come back to the planning board. On your last one, you have, this is just a proposed, but on your last page you have it, that they just have to follow the same rules. Would you be willing to change it so that if you guys sold it, then they have to come back and the, the new owner would have to come back to the planning board? I mean, if worse comes to it, I mean, the town will hopefully vote to change it anyway. But we're just.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think that even if that's in the operations manual, it really has any merit.
Right, no, I just happened to see it.
I think it's, it's probably shouldn't even be there. Um, I could, I can take it out. Um, cause if the town decided to change the ordinance, it wouldn't matter.
But, exactly.
Yeah.
What, what number is that in the operations?
It's the last one, four point four.
Oh, yeah.
Transfer of extraction rights. I don't want to take it out though, because then at least shows that they, if, say it doesn't pass for some reason, then they at least have to follow the same conditions. They know it, I guess. See this operations manual, right?
Yeah, they would be required to follow the same, um.
Well, that's how our ordinance is anyway written, but.
Yeah.
I don't, just, I wouldn't take it out.
No, I think it's fine. Leave it in there.
Can I ask a clarification? I'm sure it's just my brain fog, but in three point two on the timing, um, my understanding, Matt, was when you've done an area, you're going to reclaim it and then go move on.
Right.
So, and that's what the first sentence in the last paragraph of three point two says. It says, you'll reclaim areas onsite immediately when they are done using those areas. The, the last sentence in that paragraph though says, any areas that are no longer being used by the operator and that the operator does not perceive will need to be used, will be reclaimed annually. It seems to contradict the first sentence. This is something I'm not understanding.
Yeah, that, that is some of what of a contradiction. I should probably take out the annually part of it because it should really just be done when you're done using.
That's what I thought we were.
The acreage, yeah. Yeah.
You could probably just delete that last sentence.
Okay.
Did your dad still, is he still going to own this pit or is this going to be our Peppin and Sons?
This will still be owned by.
I wasn't sure if you wanted to change, it said the last page was your dad's signature.
It will still be owned by David J. Peppin Gravel, which is the applicant for the project. Um, and he will be a majority owner of the property, um, owning fifty-one percent, but me and my, my brother will own forty-nine percent.
So he's, he's still going to stay on that signature line?
I suppose he should. Yeah.
He's fifty-one.
He's fifty-one. Yeah. I have a list here of about ten things that are all pretty straightforward, are all not crazy difficult to deal with. Um, these are revisions that I can make pretty quickly. God, thank God. Um, but I think, I just wondering what the next step is. Do you want me to write these down and, and send these to Jason as far as my interpretation of what's been talked about tonight and then have Jason say, okay, yes? Um, and then roll from there because I am trying to be as constructive as possible about getting towards the point where we can have, you know, a vote. Um, and I'm not trying to rush anybody. I'm not trying to give you that impression, but I just want to make sure that the communication's there and that we're on the same page along the way. And I feel like we are, but, um, at this point, I am looking for it to be a little bit more of a formal process with formal guidance.
So what, give us a couple of days because what we do, we did with the last one is we waited for the minutes to, uh, appear on our whatever, when they, when they post the minute, the, the video. We go through the video and that's how we came to that last bullet point for us. So give us till like Tuesday, Wednesday, we'll submit you with a formal, same thing that we just did. We'll submit this again to you with what, you know, um.
That's perfect.
And then, and then if you can get these revisions done to us by the next meeting, that'd be fabulous.
So you need them before the next meeting for, so you have a few days to review them? Is that, what, what date would you like them submitted by?
Well, I, I asked for them on the twenty-sixth and one person showed up yesterday to pick up the information. So it's up to the board. Um, I try to ask for, I mean, if I say a week, then that gives, only gives them a few days to do it. So it's kind of, I feel that my, I don't know if that's unjust or, or not. I mean, just get them to me before the next meeting, at least a couple of days. You guys would be fine with a couple of days or you want them for more or?
I think if he gets it to you a week ahead, then it's kind of up to us to get it, you know, we have.
Right, well, if I'm waiting for the minutes, the minutes, they don't usually post the minutes till Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday, the, you know, on a good day sometimes.
You're saying it's going to be hard to make the second meet?
Well, but, but we can get him the, the formal memo by Tuesday afternoon. If they post it Tuesday, I can get it to him for Tuesday evening and then he can get everything to Saint Germain, but.
Getting it back.
But they'd have, he'd give, that would give Saint Germain two days to, to do their job.
Well, it probably isn't going to happen by the next meeting in this month. It seems like it just with the timing, but.
Damn it, I want this off my desk sooner than later.
Well, like you said, I think there's been about ten things, I didn't keep a number. If we had it a couple of days ahead of time, for me, that's, that might not be enough for you.
We could make these conditions of approval and vote on this right now. But I think you probably want to see another revision.
Yeah, and we need to get like the actual, um, map that we're going to be signing. We need like the one, the one map with the signature block that has all the, all the pertinent details on it.
Yeah.
It's kind of like, it's almost like the, it's almost like a, it would be right behind the cover letter kind of thing in this pamphlet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we've got to review that.
We have, we have to, um, list the conditions because they have to be on that sheet.
Right.
They'll be, you know, we have to go through and list that, which I think if we get these changes, we talked about several of the conditions tonight, but there are more. We, we just need to enumerate those so then you can put them on that sheet, signature sheet.
Would it be beneficial to talk about or put together a, a list of what conditions we know are going to exist now and have me put them on the sheet for the next submittal? Cause we know that you're going to, we're going to require the stormwater permit before any excavation takes place and before the permits. Uh, we know, we know that you're going to require the variance permit, copy of that.
Permit by rule. You're already kind of done.
Well, other than that new one you're talking about, yeah, I'm sorry. If a new one is required, that would be a condition.
Yeah.
Sure do.
Yeah.
I think some of the, the assertions made in the, um, in the OX plan that you're signed up to, I personally, this is me, I think would make a good condition. Like you talked about the berm. You, you have overtly said we'll make the berm before digging there, but we should, you know, have that have the force of the approval by making it a condition.
Right. Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah.
And as it were, it was.
I've got all the time in the world if you, if you want to try to start drafting those now or if you think that that's more pertinent for the next meeting, um, that I guess that'd be the decision that you guys can make and it is nine o'clock, but I'm, I'll keep chugging.
I'd like to see the twenty acres of replanted trees on, on the twenty by twenty spacing as a condition.
Okay.
I mean, I think a lot of these small things we talk about, they're included in the operations manual or on the drawings.
Right.
They don't have to be conditions, but maybe some of the larger.
I, it's a good idea for things that you really care about to, to reemphasize it.
Right.
You know, yeah.
No blasting. Make that a condition.
Yeah, it's the.
Yeah. Oh, and the, uh, the containment design, the state registration, we'd have to have that.
What do you mean by containment design?
For the thousand gallon fuel.
Oh, for the fuel? Yeah. That's what I thought you were talking, I wasn't positive.
A formal design for the spill containment?
For the slab pretty much, right?
For the slab?
That it's sitting on. You said it would be pitched in.
Right. Oh, so you want like a schematic shown of that and the details?
I think, I think that's what we're saying.
Yeah.
You want a schematic of the, um, cement pad that the, the tank, the refueling pad that's next to the tank.
Yeah.
The refueling tank, Matt, is that going to be a single wall or double wall tank?
It'll be a single wall tank, um, because it'll be inside of a spill containment. Um, yeah.
Under, it's going to be under a roof too, if it's protected.
Yeah. That was a plan.
The design and the state registration.
Have you ever set a height on that fence?
Five feet.
Five feet.
I would think an eight.
I saw five feet earlier in the operations manual.
Yeah, it's, it says. Yeah, it says a minimum of five on the plans. I thought we had talked higher, but-
Yeah.
I think it was eight.
I don't, I don't remember settling on eight, but I remember talking about it.
Right.
I mean, I think five feet if-
Yeah, I mean, the fence is gonna be there, it's gonna have some-
Around the, around the washboards.
It'll be done in due diligence.
Yeah, exactly.
Kid can climb over 10 foot lines if they want, you know.
Didn't you guys mention something about marking out the resource protection areas?
Yeah, and, and the limits of excavation with the metal stakes and flags, which are mentioned in the operations manual, but we, I didn't see an actual distance between those metal stakes or flags. So I wanted to come up with, you know, at least every 100 feet or something, let's say.
An earlier plan had 50.
What did you guys use, what did you do on the one on West Shore Drive, the other one on West Shore Drive?
We did 50 because the thing was like this. The RP was really like that, which, I mean, certain areas, they may have to go close together just to make the curve, but it's gonna be a lot of stinking. But I wanted, you know, have some sort of number for it. I think 100 is pretty reasonable. But I mean, I'd be happy with 50. What's the rest of board thing?
Pretty adequate.
You wanna be able to see it from standing from one stake to the next? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, when the, at least, you know, the man in the machine should be able to see, see two stakes at every time so you can't just go between them, so to speak.
Right, we're at 50 feet right now, right?
Oh, all right.
It wasn't an earlier plan, but it didn't make the updated plan.
Yeah, I don't think there was any, yeah, there was no actual number.
Yeah, it didn't say 50 feet apart is-
It just said-
Second-
Are you sure? I thought, I thought I read it in there. 'Cause you wanted-
2.2.
Metal stakes, that was in there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they don't disappear on you.
Yeah. The first paragraph in 2.2 talks about flagging. But it just omitted the 50 feet, 50 feet apart.
The limits of excavation.
It doesn't say 50 feet apart.
It doesn't say anything. It says the limits of excavation shall be field determined by states and/or flags and depicted on the approved plans to ensure the approved buffers between the operation, environmentally sensitive areas, adjacent properties, and right of ways are maintained. So, yeah, if we could just put the limits of excavation shall be delineated by states and/or flags, no further than 50 feet apart, or?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you put the 50 trucks a day as a condition? Or is that just an operations?
No, it could be a condition, yeah. And the operating hours would be listed on the sheet.
With the metal stakes around the pond, where were the metal stakes again?
The limits of excavation.
You just said stakes or flags. You mean, you want, you mean metal stakes, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I was just reading-
Just reading what you had in mind.
What, what's in there currently.
I think there might be another section somewhere in there that says metal, but I'd have to look more closely. 'Cause I-
I don't remember seeing that.
Oh, you seem to think you saw it on the last set of plans, but it wasn't on this set, okay.
In your hours of operation, do you include the crushing hours and days and stuff like that?
Yeah, I put that whole thing and include the 15 trucks. Or the no Saturday trucks in the summer and 15 trucks to Rico.
Um, no asphalt?
Yeah.
Matt, did you say you were not gonna haul stumps in? Or you, when you were just gonna do your own stumps?
Yeah.
So you, okay. So if you decided down the road, you're gonna come, you're gonna come back?
Yeah, I have no intention of doing that. I also said that I would not bury stumps onsite.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was just reading, and that's why I wanted to clarify that too.
Yeah. You can bury up to an acre of stumps-
Right.
With the DEP, I'm not positive what the town standard is, but-
It's, it follows the DEP, one acre. And you just end up with a giant hole 10 years down the road.
Right, but you can make that a condition of approval if you want, you know.
It's in your, it's in your ops manual. It says operator will not bury stumps onsite. So it's right there. I don't really, I don't really-
It wouldn't hurt. Make it a one line and those stumps buried on itself.
Can you think you can send me a draft of the conditions of approval?
Yeah, we're, he's doing, he's-
Oh, okay.
I'll try and get you something.
Oh, thank you.
When, when it comes out on Tuesday, I'll try to review it all and make sure I get everything down. That's what I did with the last one, that's what I was thinking.
Appreciate that.
Give him a couple, give him another year, he'll be like one of those port typers.
I'd be awesome if you'd be on that.
Yeah.
I'll send it to my typewriter next time.
One of the, one of the conditions is the surety, right?
Yeah, I've got that down.
So we need to determine, are we gonna try to determine the form of the surety tonight?
What do you think, Matt? Are you looking for a bond or a credit?
Letter credit.
Which one's easier to obtain?
The letter credit's easier to obtain, but-
Which one's easier to maintain, keep it? You know, you was a credit, you have to go every year, renew it?
I mean, does the board have to say it has to be one form or the other? Can't you just say it has to be in place according to the town requirements? 'Cause it could be better to have a letter of credit today, but, you know, worse in a few years from now.
So if they, you always maintain a form of surety?
Yeah, you always have to maintain some form of surety.
I don't, how do you guys feel?
What do you guys think?
I'd rather see a bond.
Yeah, we've gone all the way around all three of them now because we, we were stuck on the cash for a while and then we, David Wensel last time, and he mentioned the other two, so-
I'm not, whatever, to me, I feel whatever, as long as there's something in place and then it stays in place, I don't particularly, I don't know, I don't, you guys really care?
Letter of credit, we just, we get another letter of credit every-
I think you have to renew it every year.
You have to renew it every year with the bank.
And then you have to bring, but then you, it's your responsibility to bring that to me every year.
Right.
And if you didn't, I don't know where that goes.
You'd have to send me a written notification that I hadn't brought it in.
Right.
And then I'd bring it in if I didn't.
And how long is a bond good for? A bond is good, is that every year too, or is that more?
I'm not as familiar with a bond. We typically use letter, letters of credit, yeah.
And what do you guys, do you guys do that like every, like January 1st with everybody? Or is that something whenever it was established?
It typically goes on the approval date. On an annual cycle from the approval date.
You do a bond with the DEP, right?
We do a letter of credit with the DEP.
You do?
Yeah.
Do they determine what you do, or you just say, hey, I'm gonna give you this?
They give you options, just like the town does, where it could be, you know, I think it's the same three options, yeah.
So just a generic condition that maintains surety?
Performance bonds only last a year.
Will a year.
Yeah, so it's the same thing as a letter of credit?
Maintain surety at, would we agree, six grand an acre? And update annually, whatever, whatever the right words are.
Renew?
Renew.
Renew annually.
Present verification to the town annually or whatever. No blasting? You got that, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You mentioned something about a variance.
Variance permit?
It was. No entryway on West Shore Drive? Is that a condition or no?
Why would leave that option open? West Shore Drive doesn't want that option.
It was something about no road going from each road to West Shore at any point, something like that.
I'd say, I mean, you know, it, it's, when you look at these plans, like if I put an entrance into this gravel pit on West Shore Drive, like, I'm breaking the rules.
Okay, settles it.
Two-ton dump trucks usually have commercial tags. Number four, um, oh, let's see, 1.7.
They added that.
Yeah. It's kinda, are you still writing, Matt? Are you reading or texting?
I'm texting my concerned fiance.
Oh.
Yeah.
Matt, I found your 50, your, your metal, no, there was no trespassing signs around the perimeter of the gravel pit. Extraction areas prior to the concealment of excavation areas, the signs will be placed 50 feet intervals and metal stakes will be used. That was where it was, but that was just, but no trespassing.
Oh, okay. And you're, you're just talking about-
Yeah, I just, you had said I thought it was in there somewhere.
What section is that?
Uh, site access, 1.4.
Okay.
It's not a condition, it was just, we were talking about it earlier.
Anything over 10,000 pounds, it's supposed to have a commercial plate.
Right. What do we do? Is that over 10,000 pounds? Yeah, the weight. What load can they give it?
Once it's loaded, it is.
Right. So that's a commercial tag and no commercial, will not allow any commercial vehicles. And then you look down, it says, "Ready to allow standard vehicles, trails, and two-ton dump trucks."
What's that on?
Uh, 1.7, number four. What are they gonna be loaded with, though, that would get into town?
Just to maintain the road.
Yeah, that's true. Let it go, or? No, let it go. Kind of puts everybody in a predicament.
Wasn't there a certain location for the crushing that was designed?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, there was some discussion about how close to West Shore Drive-
I just, I see a portable-
It's got 200 feet in the operations manual right now.
I see a portable crushing plant, but it just doesn't say where and when.
Where are you?
Uh, 2.1, last line on the hours of operation.
Okay.
Or, not the last line, but the last hatch.
Is it on?
Dash plan. Don't know, I'm just, I was just reading from this manual.
And that's what I was saying, John, the last bullet in that memo that I have was for something on the plan, I didn't know if it was there or not. I didn't look through it.
It says 200 somewhere else.
Yeah.
You ever get a carpal tunnel, come on. How's that going, Matt?
Yeah, right here under noise, 2.8 noise. Last paragraph, operator will not operate a mobile crushing plant within 200 feet of the property line of West Shore Drive. That's where the 200 is.
I thought that was for the screener, not the crusher. I thought the screener was allowed to be close.
I thought it was both of them.
I thought he was gonna keep the crusher in the middle of the pit for noise.
Well, the screener's gonna be in the processing yard, right?
Correct.
Crusher might be in the extraction areas.
Right.
Okay.
But it's closer than 200 feet.
No closer than 200 feet, yeah.
Right, and I think you didn't do 300 'cause it was, just wasn't gonna be feasible-
Yeah.
-to actually do it.
Right, it was gonna be like far, far. Yeah.
He, one of our bullet points told him to go back and read, watch the last video at 1 hour and 40 minutes about that.
Yeah, they, you guys went back and forth about a bunch of things and then I think I agreed on something in the end, but you'd have to look.
I met with four families from West Shore Drive privately at my office after that public hearing and went over quite a bit of this with all of them and told them about the 200 feet and explained it to them and I think we all seemed on the same page. But I had them come right down to the office and we all chatted. It was most of the neighbors that are kinda right in the West Shore Drive in the vicinity of the extraction area, so.
I get it.
Two of them were family friends and like, so.
Yeah, well, we got a letter.
I'm just saying I've had, I've been having conversations with some of the neighbors about the best solution and-
No, they, they did state that you guys are, that you guys wanna work with them and stuff like that.
1.7, 1.7, number four, about the commercial vehicles. Two ton, two-ton dump trucks who have commercial tags, right? Nine times out of 10.
Yeah, they might. You wanna take two-ton dump trucks out of there?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
So what, what kind of equipment are they gonna use to build the right of way to begin with? I mean, if we limit their, you know-
Well, it's already, it's stated here, no commercial, will not allow any commercial vehicles. I mean, they'll have to figure that out. Not us.
Just so, I just don't wanna get involved.
Majority of the road's gonna be in a gravel pit.
Right.
So I think you can use the equipment in the gravel pit to build that portion of the road.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
But I mean, there's the, that's, I think, I don't really know. It's already up to say that once we get it on the map, the full right of way, then we'll know how much of it needs to be constructed outside of the gravel pit, so to speak. But I feel like they are gonna need to use some sort of vehicle in order to do it.
Yeah, like probably a skid steer at least, or a small excavator or something.
That probably ought to be looked at a little closer then 'cause it says, "Not allow any commercial vehicles, including triaxle dump trucks and other commercial equipment, including excavators and loaders, to use the right of way."
Well, maybe we should just say that they're allowed to be used for constructing the roadway. That's fair.
Yeah, parenthetically, after two-ton trucks, only for construction of the right of way.
Okay. So you're saying two-ton trucks and other small equipment, other heavy equipment?
What Chris brought up was, you know, the first part of that bullets is no commercial vehicles.
Or maintain it.
I mean, a five fifty, I mean, that has to have commercial tags on it.
Yeah, right.
So.
Yeah, so that rules that out.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, they gotta, they gotta have, they gotta be able to haul something in there if they wanna haul in a load of gravel or something.
Really?
Dump trailer.
Yeah.
For the purpose. I mean, yeah, we're talking about the construction of the road and the use of the road, two separate things.
And there's the maintenance of the road.
The use of the road, I'm just under the impression that I can construct this road however I see fit, I mean, it's a road. Like everybody, anybody in the town of Acton can build a road with whatever equipment they wanna build. You know?
Right.
But I agree that the two-ton dump truck should not be able to use the road, commercial, as a commercial vehicle. But it seems pretty open-ended to me on what you can use to actually construct it. Yeah.
Or maybe just put a clause in there that, that helps clarify the, you know, the construction versus use.
Okay.
Once the road is constructed, there will be no.
There you go.
Once constructed.
Yeah.
Okay.
There'll be no use of commercial trucks and equipment.
Okay. Yeah, let me.
Brain dead.
John, is that what you're saying?
I think we got, it was worthwhile to stay and talk about conditions, because I think that'll, we're very close.
That was a good, I think that was good.
Hold things along.
Yeah, that is awesome. I appreciate everybody staying late.
Do we wanna meet next time or do you wanna wait, wait until the first week in March?
Is there anything worth discussing next time if I don't have the plans revised?
Well, I gotta go over the condition, the, um, the conditional use checklist, right? Have you guys done that?
I don't think we have yet through this stage, which I don't.
Why don't we do that at the next meeting?
We gotta work on the zoning articles too.
Yeah, I mean, I kinda think that at the next meeting, it's gonna be hard to meet our time requirements to actually get the paperwork in front of us, time to review it, to get to that plan at the next meeting, to get it back from Saint Germain and all that, and we do need that time for, to work on our proposed zoning ordinance to use it, so maybe we should just do it at the first meeting in March.
And that way you can have all the, you'll capture all the conditions, have that cover sheet ready for that first meeting.
You gotta be ready to get this signed off on.
First meeting in March?
I said maybe.
Okay, don't get your hopes up.
No, we just, we have to go through the standards, but I think we're with these clarifications and discussions through there.
I wanna say that I have never personally thought or told anybody that this board was moving slow. I understand that you guys have gotten a little bit of maybe heat on that, but last March, you guys told me, Matt, go get your vernal pool study done, and I went, it took time for me to go do that, I don't, I think a lot of people realize that. That there was a, there was a three or four month window there where we were waiting on some studies and.
Well, you heard it in the public hearing.
Yeah.
And that was just one person, so.
It was, yeah.
You know, a lot of it, I think a lot of it was for the board, was it was such a big project with a lot of impact, so I mean, they, you know.
It is a big project.
It's not something that just gets done overnight.
No, definitely, that's true. So you don't want me to come back at the next meeting, or you do, we're gonna go over the, do you wanna go over that at the next meeting?
I think we push it to the second of March, because we gotta meet deadlines for our stuff.
Well, that one is just, it's really not, it's, it's more or less just letting them know how many we're gonna change, but.
Well, we still have to discuss that further, because we've got some other proposed.
And I don't think you, like Gavin said, I don't think you're gonna get the stuff back from Saint Germain that.
I was gonna say, I gotta go through the meeting.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a time crunch, and then if he, and if you're setting a one-week limit to get it to us, then you have Saint Germain and yourself two days to get it to them and get it back to me, so it's kinda like, you know.
Because they might charge you extra for a rush job.
As long as I don't have to change it again.
You never know.
That's fair.
The contractor's gonna do his findings of fact too.
Yeah, he gave a small bullet, bullet point today and then, but he's gonna go, he was supposed, I was hoping to have that tonight and something happened and it didn't and. Unfortunately, he's had obligations every time that we've, they're supposed to be meeting and I had him in, I had him on pen, he was definitely coming on the sixteenth, but if it doesn't sound like he should, like we should even be meeting with this applicant, then.
Got it. Well, that, that would just be showing appointments.
But he's seen, yeah, he's seen all the documents and reviewed them and, and, um, and I've given, I've given him the copies of our letters. What's that?
Well, they wouldn't have to add it to change it. The plan should be right, I mean, he's gonna change it, some of them anyway. We're talking about the fifteen and twenty-five. They'll draw that on the plans.
So it doesn't have to be conditioned?
Yeah, so I don't think.
Has Ben gonna do a final review of everything?
He did one, he, he's reviewed everything, he just didn't have time to put it all together, because he got it last Friday, whatever it was, when he gave it to us. And then he had something to do over the weekend, so he couldn't do it during the weekend, whatever it was, I'm not making excuses for anybody, but.
At this point, does he wanna just wait until the final revisions in or?
I'm gonna submit, I'm gonna give him what I give to you, so he's gonna see what's to be put on the plan, so he can add that to his notes, um, and then I don't even know if it's even worth bringing him in, done, gone so far without him.
Well, I'd like to see his finding of facts, it'll help us when we go.
Sure.
I don't know if he has to be here, if he puts it in right and.
Right, if it's a memo. I mean, I'm just thinking, saving time and money, I guess, because if he comes and that's more hours that he's here and.
Yeah, just get the memo.
Just get the memo, okay. You have, you fine with that, just the findings of the facts?
Yeah. He's, he's gonna give you a memo on his review of the plans?
Yeah.
And he's gonna give you.
So he's, he's got everything that.
Yeah.
You gave us, um, I submitted everything to him, uh, and, um, I'm gonna give him, when, when we get this video up, we'll review everything, get you the bullet point memo of our findings or whatever you wanna call it, and then I'll also submit that to him for it. As soon as he knows, so he's on the same page as what's gonna be coming up.
Okay, that sounds like a good plan.
Or do you want his findings of the facts before, before you get it before, as soon as I get it, I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Then you can review it as well.
And you said that there's a conditional use checklist that we need to go through as a group, is that?
Yeah, but we've been referring to it all along, I think, I think, I mean, it's gonna be, yeah, we've been talking about this whole. It's just kinda.
I mean, I can come to the next meeting if you want, and if we have time to go through this, we can do it, but if you don't have time, then we can forget about it. If you, it's, it's up to you.
Will he have his, um.
I don't mind.
By the next meeting?
I'll, I'll reach out to him tomorrow, I think he should, um, because he had, he just said he didn't have time to do it all for this meeting, but he gave you what, you know, figured he'd give you something to review. I don't know if you guys had a chance to read it, because I got it this afternoon and you can get it in your packets.
It's just, it's two, it's two pages.
Yeah, it's just two pages, and I didn't even give Matt a copy, and I'll give him mine right now, whatever it is. Um, because like I said, I just got it this afternoon, so I don't know which side it's on.
Nice.
You all right back there, Virginia?
So you wanna get back to me on whether I should come to the next meeting or not, because if you have the, the information from Ben, then maybe it'd be worth having me come, because if there's time, we could go through the conditional use checklist.
Uh, I'll get back to you on that and I'll talk to Chris on it, let me talk to Ben tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, and see where he wants to, what he wants to do with that, but I think that if I can, if our office can get this to him, um, as well as yourself, I don't see it being too much going through the checklist, how long do you think that would take?
Probably. Gavin was just telling me, we don't see anything much in it, one, we're gonna have to, and we already have needed a condition, the stormwater.
Yeah, I mean, is that something you wanna just do before they sign, he signs off, you guys do the plan or?
You have that down, the stormwater, uh, bringing the plan?
I believe I do. They submitted something, you submitted something to the state, didn't you, for the stormwater plan?
It's in process.
Oh, it's in process.
Yeah, because our conditions say has been designed.
And so you, you said that could take up to six months, is that what that was?
Right.
And when did that?
The timeline showed September as it being completed.
Oh.
Approved, what, what did it say for when it was going in? I don't remember, it was pretty soon.
Oh, it hasn't been submitted yet, they're still working on it?
It hasn't been submitted yet, um.
That was the condition.
Third week of February, they were shooting to.
Before excavation, is that?
Yeah, so if you can give us a copy of that submission, we could at least say it's, you know, it has been a condition of approval.
Yeah, it says, it says a pre-application form to start.
Followed. Okay, I thought you had something in here for stormwater, or is that just stating that they did it, that they're working on it?
I can submit the pre-application form.
Is that it?
I don't think anybody wants to look at these things tonight.
No, we didn't.
I'm gonna stay in till midnight. And I gotta leave here by five thirty in the morning, I gotta get blood drawn by six.
Just leave now, you get there early, you get overtime.
In my fasting period. I think we should focus next meeting on those. And if we have to, then decide.
Yes.
Yeah.
May I steal my paperwork from San Francisco?
Other than the solar.
Yeah, you want it back?
Yeah.
All right.
It's just a memoir, you know? It was a challenge, I accept it.
You shush.
Well, that's kinda what, that's what brought it all, all up, you know, you can thank your dad for it, because that's what brought all that up.
Hey, you can get, tell him next time he does it, you want that two percent of then the other. All right, really, I think we're gonna probably. Do what we can and.
I could've been out there by nine, but you had to say something, Dad.
Yeah.
It'll be all set.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Negotiating that took place.
Right.
I'll be in touch, we're, we'll talk about it.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night, Matt.
We get to the end of this road.
Okay, so what's on the agenda next time other than?
Was that daycare coming in next meeting?
No.
So nobody?
Good.
I will leave it.
We'll do changes.
Zoning ordinance changes next time.
Sounds great, nice that we need stress free.
Establish your workshop.
Can my wrist break?
Because what was the dates we had?
Seventeenth, so by next, by, we, next Friday, we need to know how many were, our next meeting, we need to know how many were changing. Um, and then they needed to be, we had like another month or something like that. I think this application that we just dealt with, I think it should, we shouldn't be having to spend too much time on it, right? I think it's pretty much wrapped up, if he, if he comes in with all the right information. Because that's been what's, that's what's been taking all our time, so if he comes in with all the appropriate documents and the right changes, then I'm hoping that we can get him in and out, but. And then I know Elias said he's here for the first week, but then he's gone for the rest of March, so he won't be there, and then we're waiting, we're gonna be waiting on the daycare for her doc, we'll do the sidewalk, but then we're essentially waiting for her documents too. Yeah.
Yeah.
She made it sound like she needed our approval because of the state.
Yeah, I, she, yeah, she said something like that, I, you know, I'll go back and review that or have some discussion with her.
I think that's part of her application, is that she has to have some sort of a commitment from the town that it is approved.
Right, so she had given me some documents.
The status.
Right, it's kind of a, he said she's, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think, I, you know, I mean, we could, could you give her a conditional?
Oh, I have already given her a, I gave her, so the state sends out a pretty much a zoning, asking that, to make sure that it even fits into the zoning, and I've already approved, I've already said that it does, that there is no, you know, for that, for that zoning, it is an approved use. And I don't know if that's, if she's, if that's what she's talking about or it's just. You know, that's, you know, so I mean, I don't really know what, what else she's looking for, um, and maybe I'll get some clarification from her for that, for you guys. But if, um, Chris would've done his job like I asked him to, I would've known this.
I think that's all she needs. I'm a busy man, fella.
But I, so I, I do know that somebody wanted to come in for grace pact to a certain extent, but I mean, I can, I'm not gonna put him in on the, in February, on the third. You guys have already dealt with this once, he just doesn't wanna move backwards, so he came back, he's coming back with another set. There's another, so.
Who is that?
Um, this is, um, Cronin, he's on West, the end of West Shore Drive, all the way in the cove. He came in, I think, a few years ago with Tyler Matthews and the board wanted to move him backwards. Uh, he wanted to tear down and rebuild and the board wanted to move him backwards, um, which would've caused him to put in a whole new septic and all this other, so he's gonna come in and he wants to propose just putting a foundation under his existing place. So he doesn't have to go backwards, doesn't have to cut down trees, doesn't have to put in a new septic, and he just wants to put in a small addition on the back of the house, so. That's all, that's what he's coming in to propose, so. At some point, he, I met with him just the other day, but he's, I'm still waiting for some documents from him too now.
Well, let's just focus on wood minutes.
No, yeah, no, I am not putting, I'm gonna leave that agenda for free. But that might, we'll see, we'll talk about it next meeting anyway.
Should we be trying to draft something with your, for your mineral extraction, uh?
Yeah, I gave you guys some of those things from the other municipalities, and my biggest thing is with that whole thing is, you know, you'll see in, in those mineral extractions that every. you know, you'll see in, in those mineral extractions that everybody has something that these companies have to come back every five, three or five years, and that if it does change ownership, then it requires the new owners to come back in and review the conditions and the surety. Right now, my ordinance doesn't say anything about that. Um, it tells, it pretty much, it goes, the ordinance, it doesn't say anything, so pretty much the conditions run with the land, so. Um, that's what I was talking with Matt earlier, was if he was to change ownership, would he, you know, but that is something that I'd like to see, it just and then, you know, that would help out for right now, uh, and like, and like I said, with that whole, it, also, you'll see in everyone's you're nobody's grandfather, so as soon as that change gets put into the grant, the ordinance, every mineral extraction in, in Acton would have two years to comply. Would have to come back in and make sure their sureties and their conditions, and that would, that is what's gonna help bring everybody to the same type of conditions, you know, your operating hours, you know, you'll know their truck traffic, sureties are up to date, things like that.
Balance.
Right, and then, and, and that way, now everybody's on the same playing field. And nobody's saying, well, it was stricter for me, not them, and, you know, that stuff, but it really is the sureties that. So.
Yeah, because they're all over the place.
There's, like I said, there's, there's four in there that you guys can review. And I, I think most of them have that, where they, that pretty much says that nobody's grandfather, then that everybody with a conditional use application for mineral extraction has to come back, or comply within two years. I don't know, but anyway, I'm tired.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? No one opposed. Good night, thank you.